Okay, welcome everyone. This is the November tenth, twenty twenty-two Town Official Planning Board meeting, and the meeting is called to order at seven oh four PM. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let's see, the only thing I want to do before we start on the agenda is to mention that Jody Burka indicated that she will not be able to attend tonight's meeting, so I wanted to appoint VJ Gopal as a voting member for tonight's meeting. So, welcome. And we'll miss Jody, but that's the way it is sometimes. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes for to adopt and approve the September eighth, twenty twenty-two, and October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. So nonsubstantive corrections were sent to the Planning Department by myself. Why don't we consider them separately in case anybody has to abstain from the vote? So first, would someone make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the September eighth meeting?
I'll do that.
All right, Fred, is there a second?
Second.
Bob? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, abstained.
Okay. All right. So one abstention, any no votes, anyone vote against? All right, so that's six in favor.
Oh, five.
Five. Oh, Felix is not here. He always throws things off. All right, five in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. Any comments or corrections on the October thirteenth minutes?
No.
Would someone make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting?
So moved.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Bob, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. All right, so that's six in favor and none opposed. All righty. Good. All right, so we have a public hearing tonight. That's the TL Holdings of New York, three lot subdivision. I'll read the public hearing announcement, and then I'll ask the applicant to give a brief update on the plans. So at seven PM, or as soon as possible thereafter, applicant seeks to subdivide two parcels consisting of thirty-two point one eight acres and thirty-four point two-one acres into three residential lots. Lot one consists of nine point nine seven acres, lot two, six point eight eight acres, and lot three, forty-nine point five four acres. Lot one and lot two are proposed to support single-family dwellings with onsite wells and septic systems. Lot three is proposed with a shared driveway easement and associated maintenance agreement, and is proposed as a non-realty subdivision that does not require Dutchess County behavioral and community health approval at this time. The parcels for this proposal are identified as TaxMac parcel number six-three-five-six-zero-zero one-three-one-zero-eight-zero, consisting of thirty-two point one eight acres in the R forty zoning district, and TaxMac parcel number six-three-five-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-nine-five, consisting of thirty-four point two-one acres in the R four A zoning district, and they're located at seventeen eighty-four New York State Route fifty-two. Would someone please make a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Anthony moves it, Fred seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're opening the meeting, vote six to zero. All right, welcome. Welcome, Mr. Stokosa. Would you like to give a brief overview of the plans for the benefit of the audience?
Sure, close, Brian Watts.
Brian Watts, sorry.
Brian Stokosa detained at another meeting.
Sorry.
Tonight, yep. The project, again, yes, is a subdivision of approximately sixty-six point three-nine acre parcels. Currently, they are approximately split right down the middle, you're proposing the three lots. Lot one has the majority of the road frontage. Lot two is a flag lot with access, with the flag pole, if you will, on the west side, and the balance of the property is in lot three, which will be this large, large flag with the flag pole, if you will, on the east side of the property. We won't be using those for access to these lots. All three lots will utilize a common driveway in this general vicinity.
Please, aside, one here.
Currently, there is one structure, one house, under construction. It was given proper approvals to be built on the east, western lot, the existing lot, and it utilizes an existing farmland, gravel, improved farming road, if you will. The property has quite a few of them. There is a wetland in the property in the upper corner. These are lots, lot one and lot two. This is that existing, the under-construction house and the driveway. This is lot two with the flag here. The other, we're not showing any improvements in lot three, again, because that is due to the size and the nature of the subdivision. Board of Health isn't going to review that at this time, so if any future development for that lot would require Board of Health submission approval at that time. All these various roads, paths, and previous access lanes are proposed to be eliminated to the extent they're not going to be utilized for the common driveway. We are currently before the Board of Health for approval of the septic. The primary septic for this residence is already approved. We are just getting approval for the expansion area in this vicinity and primary and replacement area for lot two. We also are seeking the New York State DEC buffer permit as may be required and DOT permit as required. This is subject to a SWIP. We've submitted it. It's a basic SWIP because it's between one and five acres of disturbance between these two lots.
Okay.
In a nutshell.
Good, all right. All right, so first, let me ask, can we see a show of hands of anyone in the audience who is going to want to speak at this public hearing?
Big turnout.
I don't see anybody raising their hands.
Give it a minute.
Well, I won't give it a minute to say that because I don't see any hands raised, I'm not going to read the public hearing format that we use and the regulations that we require, so the rules of conduct, I will skip those, but I will give another thirty seconds or so just to see if anyone comes in and decides to speak at this. Otherwise, we will move on very soon.
Here's no one on my side.
And you don't see anyone on that side, right? Okay, well, there apparently is nobody here to speak to this matter, so that probably makes it a fairly easy matter to decide whether we're going to close this public hearing tonight.
So moved.
I heard a motion, Fred moves it. Any seconds?
Second.
Five seconds it. Before we vote, does that sound reasonable to you, Dominic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. This is on closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes six to zero, and we will continue discussion of the application later on in the meeting, actually, fairly soon.
Thank you.
So we'll see you in a couple of minutes. We have a new submittal tonight. This is the Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit. Applicant requests approval to construct a four-story, seventy-six thousand four hundred sixty-four row square foot, climate-controlled self-storage facility. The proposed access will be from Westage Business Center Drive via an adjacent property located at six hundred Westage Business Center Drive with an access easement. Seventeen parking spaces are proposed, which shall require a waiver from the Planning Board. The parcel for this proposal is identified as TaxMac parcel number six-one-five-five-zero-zero-eight-six-six-five-three-five, located at five-five-zero Westage Business Center Drive in the PSC Plan Shopping Center District, and consists of four acres. This will be to refer the application to the town Planning Board Attorney, Town Planning Board Engineer, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, the New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rombell Fire District. And the Planning Board will allow informal comments from the public after the discussion of this application. All right.
Okay, well, thank you for the intro, so I could get everything together here.
Sure, and I understand the applicant has submitted the required application fee and escrow deposit for the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, welcome to the applicant team. Yeah, why don't you introduce yourself, and the plans are going to be shown on the screen, so you can refer to those.
Okay, thank you very much. See if I can juggle these two laptops up here. I'm Kyle Ehren with Labella Associates, the civil engineer for the project. I also have Neil Alexander here from Cuddy Fetter, the project attorney, and Captain Patel is the project self-storage consultant. He has over twenty-seven years specifically in self-storage consulting and has seen basically every, every way you can do a self-storage facility he has done. So we threw together what I just handed out, is a, just a quick presentation to kind of go over the highlights of the project and basically the considerations that we took when we were putting the site plan together that we wanted to discuss with you guys tonight. So I'll just jump right into that, and then I will, you know, go basically bring up the relevant plan from the site plan submission as well while we're, while we're discussing So as you know, this is within the Westage area. It is the, I didn't want to get my pointer out here. Oh, it's in my back, excuse me, one second. Okay, so it's, this is not going to go far enough. Well, that's unfortunate. All right, well, I'll use the pointer here. So five-fifty Westage is what we're calling it, it's down in the south-west corner of Westage. This right here is the I eighty-four corridor to the south of the project. This is the big lake in the middle of Westage, and then you have the loop of, you know, office and hotel and townhouse, or condos, I should say, around that lake there. Just to the north of us is six hundred Westage, which I've been calling Caremount, but I guess I should be calling Optum at this point. You have five hundred Westage to the east of us, and then to the west and south, as I said, is the I eighty-four right-of-way. I should also mention, the applicant is Fishkill Storage. Bobby Patel is the applicant. He was hoping to be here tonight, so he wanted to just apologize that he wasn't able to make it, but he will be at future meetings, you know, any that his schedule allows. Also with my office, Karen Lebruto, the planner, and she's the project manager for this project on our end. I've been working hand-in-hand with her, so short of some planning questions, hopefully I can answer the rest of those. So this is a three point nine eight acre site. It's in the PSC zoning district with the rest of the Westage area. It's undeveloped at the moment, you know, this, as part of Westage, it's been part of a master development plan since the eighties. It's gone through, you know, a lot of different plans for what, what this parcel has become, and we'll, you know, we'll go through some of, some of the more site-specific existing condition issues in the next few slides. But this was parcel six of that master development back in the nineteen eighties and nineties, and we're proposing, as the chairman said, the self-storage facility, and we'll talk about those site conditions. So the proposed site plan, you know, let's bring it up here. So the, some of the main, you know, constraints, it, basically what we're looking at right here is, you know, the full parcel. So you have the Clove Creek to the west of us, it's actually off the site, but it's running along the entire west side here. You have then, essentially running parallel to that is a water course that was constructed, and actually I should say the Clove Creek itself, and, and this onsite water course. There's been a lot of disturbance and rerouting of wetlands and water courses. That was all first a result of I eighty-four being constructed, and then Westage over time as it was developed, you know, there were some, you know, changes to the land in order to accommodate that development. The water course, you know, you can see it's a pretty, you know, engineered layout here to redirect some of the drainage to the outside of the parcel. This is a wetland, point-six acre wetland. Not so much planned. You know, essentially, the drainage from the adjacent parcel dumps onto this parcel, and over time, what has happened is that it's become a, you know, a wetland just by the fact that they have this discharge location directly on the site. So if you go back, back in the eighties and the early two thousands when this parcel was actually subdivided, that was not a contemplated constraint, you know, an environmental constraint that was thought of at the time. So as, you know, time has progressed, that has become a wetland, so at this stage, you know, we're trying to work, work with it and work around it. So because of that, essentially, we are, the goal for this pro, you know, there's a lot of goals, but as far as the wetland goes, the goal here is to completely avoid any disturbances whatsoever, so we're not even talking about going up to the one point one acre threshold. We're proposing a, you can essentially consider it a bridge, but most likely it will end up being a, a concrete prefabricated box culvert or bridge structure that will be installed there, and the point of that is that it will bridge over the wetland so that you can get the road through there without any disturbances to that wetland. Same concept along this side of the project, so the south side of the wetland, north side of the parking area. We have a, excuse me, a retaining wall proposed there. It'll be about five to six feet tall, and that, again, will be there to avoid any impacts of the wetlands, so you're not grating into, into the wetland from that access drive. We're proposing a thirty-foot drive here. That is just for essentially ease of use for this facility. You know, they're going to get a decent amount of U-Haul trucks and other larger trucks coming in and out, just unloading, you know, whatever they're bringing into their storage unit. We did discuss the layout with the fire chief, and he was happy that he saw, you know, his turnaround area. Here's the fire code, the thirty feet more than exceeds the fire code width that's required. We did discuss and added to the plan a fire hydrant, which you don't see here, but it's on the utility plan in this corner here, to provide some fire protection. And, you know, we're doing all that, it should also be noted that the, you know, this building will essentially be unoccupied for the most part, you know, most of the time, you know, with the exception of one to two office workers and maybe a few customers coming in and out relatively quickly. You know, this isn't going to be highly occupied. Actually, while we're still here, I do want to mention, so the wetlands, we're avoiding all impacts, and because of that, there are some, you know, you see here, within thirty feet of this water course, there is a town thirty-foot buffer, so, and actually, let's go to the grading plan, give some more information on that. And if you flip to the, within the PowerPoint presentation, there's a town water course buffer encroachment page. All right, so here you have the grading plan, and there's this hatched area.
Could you just use the microphone, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So there's this hatched area going around the, the outside of the development, and that has been broken down into three separate areas. So essentially, you have a corner, the southeast corner of the building here, which has point zero one acres of encroachment into that buffer, and then you have another point zero one acre within the fire, fire truck turnaround area here. And then the rest, which totals point one-two acres, is vegetative disturbance that will be disturbed in order to grade in the improvements and the stormwater management basin, but at the end of the day, it will be, you know, vegetation will be reestablished, and it will go back to essentially that, that buffer area. So, you know, and also the, the water course, as we discussed, it's receiving a lot of I eighty-four runoff at the time. It's not, you know, we, we had our wetland biologists analyze this area, both, excuse me, both the wetland and the water course, and neither of them is really considered a, like a high wa, high-quality resource. They're both pretty low-quality. We are still going to, you know, we are required to, and we are going to treat all stormwater runoff from the site, and we are also going to be maintaining existing hydrology, and by that I mean, we won't be increasing the peak discharge of flow from the site, and we'll be maintaining it in the sense that we have two different discharge locations, so we have the one up by the wetland area, and then also one down by the water course here. You know, a lot of, a lot of times, you're looking to minimize your discharge, but in the case of a wetland, you're actually trying, the, the bigger goal is not to decrease your discharge, but to maintain it. So you're maintaining your hydrology, which essentially maintains that wetland in its So, and that, that wetland, by the way, had been delineated back in twenty seventeen, back when Caremount or Optum, there we go, that one's going to take a while to remember. They were looking to basically see the potential for development of this site, so we had done a delineation back then. We did go back out in this past month, in October, and we did confirm, we re-flagged every, all the flags from that previous delineation, we rechecked it and did confirm that everything out there now is, is, you know, consistent with what was done in twenty seventeen, so there's no change there. And one more thing, let me go back to the previous, previous page real quick, back to the site plan. The next page in the PowerPoint is the, the rear yard. So the rear yard for Westage, and we're talking for the outside parcels, so not where you're inside, you know, interior to the site, and you're only adjacent to other Westage parcels, but because we're on the outside, there's a one-hundred-foot setback requirement in order to get away from the wetland and to have parking in front of the building, which is much more, you know, business, operationally makes a lot more sense than coming around the outside of the building to the back to have your main entrance. So in order to have the parking in front and to stay away from the wetlands, and to have a footprint that is, you know, more in line with what works for self-storage, you do have the corner, you know, we, we talked about the corner here that has that buffer encroachment. That same corner is also closer than the hundred feet, so it's currently proposed at fifty-one point one feet, and this is, you know, this is the option that we think is the, makes the most sense, and we'll talk about some other, other things that were considered in a minute here on the next slides. But that's fifty-one point one feet is what we're proposing, so it would be a forty-eight point nine feet variance that would be required from the ZBA, and, and that would be the only variance. Benefit here, of course, is while I, the, you know, the lack of wetland disturbance like you talked about, the, having the parking in front, and also considering the location of that parking in relation to the building entrances, the office entrance, the, there's elevators and stairs, so there's, there's different entrances that can be utilized, and this provides the most access to all of them and the, and the best loading potential. Okay, so speaking of the alternatives, I guess I'll just stay here at the site plan. But, so there's two, two main alternatives that improve, you know, improve in some senses and also, you know, they have pros and they have, and they have cons. So alternative one is we rotated the building outside of the wetland buffer, and it increases the rear setback to about seventy-four feet. The biggest drawback, of course, is that you then drop down to nine parking spaces, which does meet what the ITE recommends for, for this use. So the ITE, it works out to about one parking space per ten thousand square feet, so for our seventy-four thousand and change building, they say you need eight space, eight spaces or more. So we do get the number of parking spaces, but the loading is, is very restricted, and that parking is far from the, the office entrance, so you're essentially walking all the way across the building to get to the office, and, and the loading just is, is not ideal. The, yep?
The one that's up there right now has half a parking spaces, just to give a reference.
Right, so the, the proposed is seventeen parking spaces.
And me in the parking.
Right, yes, so town zoning doesn't specifically, you know, calculate a requirement for self-storage, so if you go with, based on what is provided in town code, the, I have it on the title sheet here, but it's like seventy-something spaces, which, you know, obviously for self-storage, the vast majority of your customers are not coming every day or even every week for a lot, you know, for most people, and when they are there, they're usually coming in, dropping off, or picking up some, a few things, and then they're on their way. So, you know, again, to go back to that ITE number, and, you know, Captain can, can speak on that as well, as far as what the actual need, and, and you guys also have experience with other projects in the town, but the need is, you know, between eight and nine minimum. Seventeen also gives you that flexibility to have, you know, those, those U-Haul trucks could potentially utilize parking spaces, because that, you know, eight to nine is really customers. potentially utilize parking spaces, because that, you know, eight to nine is really customers. All right, so that's alternative one. Alternative two is on the next page and it's, it's essentially a hybrid of the two. So instead of rotating it all the way out of the buffer and losing as much parking and loading, we rotated a little less. We get almost entirely out of that buffer. There's a tiny sliver there. Your setback increases to 63 feet and you get, well, I kept it at nine spaces. You could squeeze in a few more if you wanted to, but I left the rest as just additional loading area, which, you know, is the main benefit there. So, you know, we thought that was a pretty good compromise, still not, operationally still, we, we feel like the, the site plan that was presented and is proposed still gives, you know, the town the best project, you know, ultimately, you know, as a, as a whole package.
That second alternative would still require a variance, right?
Yes, so all three require a variance. It's just a matter of the size of that variance, correct?
Yeah.
What is proposed height of building?
Sorry?
The height of building?
The hydrant what?
The height of the building.
Oh, the height of the building, sorry. So it's, it's four stories. We'll be submitting architecturals in the next package, but the floor-to-floor is about 11 feet, so you're probably talking mid-40s on height.
But that's, that's, I'm sorry, I'll just come up for a second, sorry. Good evening, everybody, again, for the record, it's Neil Alexander, cutting and feder. But that's a great question, because as you know, in that zone, we're allowed to go up to seven stories. So that's exactly what we're trying to triangulate here, is the setback from the rear yard, which, you know, in the nature of, of that created water course up against Interstate 84 and the visibility of other structures from, from 84, as you're all familiar with, we're trying to, sort of, so there's a hard requirement of 100 feet and we need a variance. We also need a parking waiver based on, you know, our experience, we know that we don't need anywhere near that parking amount and the height, right? And so we also know, you know, we'd like to, we were starting out lower, you know, and to get the footprint in, to get the crossing in. And that, and that's why, you know, Kyle's been sort of presenting it very methodically the way he has, to show, to really help you understand the balance of the design that we undertook in sort of editing ourselves and our own journey as to how we got here. So obviously, there's a certain size building you need in order to be successful. There's loading and then, you know, when you get into the weeds of how self-storage works, which I'm sure other applicants have said, as far as, you know, different size units, this is a self-storage, this isn't just, you know, warehouse storage. So we're, we have the consumer in mind as to what size units, how to maximize the efficiency of that number of units per floor, right, in order to get what you can gross lease out to people. So that's what we're trying to triangulate between, is holding on no, essentially no wetland disturbance, having some disturbance for the stream, reducing our parking to what's reasonable. And that's what we're triangulating. And we think we got a great balance here, because we're holding the wetland line, we're having a reasonable, we're not cutting to the lowest amount of parking that we could possibly have, you know, show you numbers that substantiate using IT and otherwise. We're leaving plenty of room for that amount of parking and loading in front. We're getting to the footprint of a building that we need from a leaseability standpoint, but we're not maxing out at the full seven, seven-story unit. So we're trying to, you know, recognize that while we're on 84 and people could travel, you know, people travel for self-storage, we possibly could fill seven stories, but we're, we're editing ourselves before we even met with you.
How many units before? How many units before, you said?
Total would be about 650.
650 for the four floors.
Excuse me, say that into the mic.
So it'd be about 650 units for all four floors together, so 100 and change, you know, for each floor.
Okay, so just, just so you're aware, this is the first appearance before the board and basically, our main goal tonight is to consider acceptance and referral of the application.
Sure.
So just keeping that in mind, we don't need to get into a lot of the nitty-gritty details tonight and we'll, we'll take that up at the next meeting, but whatever you think is important for us to understand.
I think we're on the same page, because I actually just saw my utility slide and I, I thought that's probably a little more than we need to go into tonight.
But you, but you're really proposing, number one, proposal, not the alternative, is the one you prefer?
Correct, the preferred, and the proposed is the site plan, what was submitted on the, on the site plan, yes.
But you're willing to go to one of the others?
Well, the, the other two are just, the other two were to demonstrate some things that we considered while we were, you know, coming up with this final plan. That, that plan was the result of those alternatives, essentially. Yeah, but we're certainly, you know, open to hearing what you guys, you know, what your thoughts are on, you know, because there's, there is a lot going on here between the, you know, the buffer, the setback, the layout, you know, there's, there's a lot there, so. And then, you know, the permits and approvals, we just, we've essentially gone over everything town, town side. We also will be going to the Department of Health, you know, we think they'll want to see this. Technically, this is really just a service connection, so there's a possibility they won't, no, need to approve it, but we will run that by them. You know, there is a pump station proposed, so knowing Duchess County Health Department, I, I have a feeling they'll, they'll want to take a look. DEC, you know, will be, like I said, will be applying for the stormwater permit. You know, we'll be applying to Shipbo, but we wanted to come here, talk to you all about, you know, the specific layout before we, we go talk to Shipbo and get, you know, get that ball rolling. But yeah, I mean, we are, we're hoping you guys will declare lead agency tonight, but I, you know, I understand your process may be a little different, but we're, you know, we are hoping to, you know, to move this, you know, as quickly as, you know, the process will allow. So that's, that's really all I have.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
All right, thanks. Yeah, so I'll ask board members at this point if you have any other questions beyond what we've heard so far.
Real quick, I think, that was very good, okay, it's a good presentation. I like that you brought us the package, that's good. Just, I know you said you spoke with the fire department. Do you have 300, 360 access to the building, do they have?
We do not. So that is, that is something that was discussed with him.
Okay.
He, between the turnaround that we do provide and the access at the front, which, you know, is full length of the building and provides access for their aerial trucks if need be. So he was happy with the access that we were providing.
Okay, so they were okay with that?
Yes.
Because I know, one of the last ones we had over in Westage, they, we had to make some modifications so that they could have 360 access.
Yeah, actually, we do have a letter from them that I intended to submit, but it, that didn't make it in, so let me, let me make sure that does get to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question as well. If you can just remind me, from Route 9 to the parcel, what, what businesses or what, what would need to be passed, say, if you were driving to the site? Just to understand what it would take to get there by, you know, various vehicles.
Sure. So this, and there's a couple different entrances to Westage, but I think most likely you would use Merritt, or, sorry, Westage Business Drive and then, I'm in the wrong. The downfall of two, two laptops, bear with me real quick.
You have to drive in front of the medical center? Is that what you're planning on doing?
Yes, so...
Yeah, I think you have to go through the Caremount and Marriott.
Yeah, I was making sure.
That was always contemplated when the subdivision of 6A, 6B occurred many years ago.
Right.
I'm trying to project, sorry. For some of the other reasons, I'm screaming at me. No, I am. I get to call some of the people at home.
I mean, I'm just asking the general question. We, you know, certainly revisit this during the process, but I think it's important to consider what, what you'd have to drive past to get to this, this location.
Right, so you come in, Westage Business Drive, you would drive past, what is that, Ruby Tuesday there, and then you'd take a left, and then you'd pass by 300, the office building there, 400, which is the, another office, 500, which is the hotel, the Spring Hill Suites there.
Yeah.
And then you, the, the entrance is basically right at the southeast corner of the Optum parking lot there. And then, so it's a shared, shared access and then you come in through there.
Has there been any preliminary discussions with those other lot owners?
The, with, with Optum, Optum, with Optum, yes.
Yeah.
That, and that's actually, I believe, the seller of, of this property, they still own it, yeah.
Kind of related to, I mean, how much truck traffic do you expect, I mean, passing through all the buildings?
So the peak, I should have that number here, but I kind of glossed over it, because we talked, we focused on the parking, but for the traffic itself, the peak morning is only seven, seven trips and then the PM is 11. You know, there really shouldn't be any, I guess, depending what you call truck traffic, there shouldn't be any large trucks for the most part, so we're talking like box trucks, like U-Haul size. Smaller trucks would be part of that number.
Because they have to go through all these buildings, the medical building and the portal.
Yeah, it might be good if you have some data from other self-storage facilities of how many of those U-Haul types of trucks compared to, you know, cars or other, you know, smaller vehicles you might expect.
Okay, I'm looking into that.
And I was glad to hear Shipbo mentioned in here, because we are in that circle area of what is known as the Official Supply Depot, potential area for previous applications that we've had. So it's not too far from that 84-9 intersection. And I know John may remember Felix as well, that during that process, there was a, a circle placed on that area as potentially being of some sort of historical significance. And I don't know what the historical, what the history of this parcel is, if it's always been undeveloped, but, you know, good to hear that that was part of the, the package here that was in the FVAF report.
Yeah, and the environmental assessment form and report did identify this area as sensitive for archaeological resources, so, yeah, Shipbo will have all the information. By the way, I was just going to mention, I appreciate the, the well put-together environmental assessment report. It was, you know, very clear and it had more than just the form itself, it had a lot of other textual information that was helpful.
Thank you, appreciate that. I do want to go back to that question real quick. And we will definitely, you know, look into providing a better breakdown of how much is, you know, passenger cars versus U-Haul. But I do think it's just worth noting real quick that self-storage is a permitted use here, so I, you know, it's, it's kind of anticipated that, that, that type of traffic would be coming to the site. But yeah, we'll, we'll provide more on that.
And how many employees are you going to have in the building? Because that affects your parking.
At any one time, usually one, it could be up to two at certain points, but...
Thank you.
I was just going to mention, so the environmental assessment form did identify the potential for Indiana bat and timber rattlesnake, and there was a little bit of information in the report, but it might not be a bad idea to, you said you had a biologist or an ecologist look at the area. Might not be a bad idea to have them do a habitat suitability assessment report on the potential for disturbance to those areas?
Yeah, they did actually, so they did assess for, excuse me, for the rattlesnake specifically, because that's always one that you see and you, you want to know more immediately before you get too far into anything. So the timber rattlesnake habitat, it was a hit for the site because of proximity, but the habitat is actually across 84 in the, what's that, the Hudson Highlands? So within the mountain areas, so on that side. So the onsite, you know, it's, they determined it was extremely unlikely for this site, you know, the I-84 crossing being part of it, but also just because the habitat onsite is not suitable for timber rattlesnakes.
And the other thing we'll need pretty soon is building elevations and materials, colors, textures, all that stuff.
Certainly.
This building will be very visible from 84, correct?
Yes, you'll, you'll be able to see, I mean, there is some vegetation, but you'll, you'll see it, yes.
I remember from our pre-application meeting, there was some discussion of a, a building mounted sign that would be facing I-84.
Yes.
And so, yeah, so the elevation should show whatever that's going to be. And, you know, it might not be a bad idea to do some kind of a, I'm not, not like a full visual study, but, you know, something that would document what the building with the sign is going to look like from I-84.
Okay. Yeah, and I know, you know, the applicant's aware of, of the visibility from 84, which, you know, it's, it's partially what makes this site, you know, good for commercial use. But at the same time, they understand that they're going to have to, you know, make that facade, you know, take that into account when they provide the architecturals, so that, you know, high visibility side of the building will, you know, look appropriate.
Up there, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Do you plan on putting two signs up? One on, one on 84 side, one on the front side? Is that what the plans were?
Did we talk about both sides of the building, on the, on the building itself?
I think we're still figuring out our signage package.
Yeah, so I know, I know there will be on, on the building, on the 84 side. I'm not sure if, on the site side, if it will be just a, like a monument ground-mounted sign or if, or if he's planning a, a building mounted as well. So we'll have, we'll have to, you know, finalize the signage package and get that into you guys.
On that note, if I may, you know, since this project will require a variance, it might be worthwhile to, you know, do that analysis earlier on in the process, because if there is a variance that's required for signage, you could end up with a trip to the ZBA not once, but twice.
Sounds fun.
Fair point.
Well, I know this hasn't been referred to our consultants yet, but Dominic, do you have any other questions at this point?
No, not at this time.
All right, how about John?
No, none at this time.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'm going to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any informal comments on this. If there is, please raise your hands and we'll recognize you. I'm looking around the podium and I don't see anybody back there.
No one on my side.
Yeah, can we send some scouts out into the audience and...
Take a poll.
All right. Well, since we are, I think, ready to consider a motion to accept this application and refer it to the appropriate agencies, this would be a motion to accept the application for the proposed Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course, Water Body Permit located at 550 Westage Business Center Drive and to refer this application to the Town Planning Board Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District for review and comment. We didn't include this in the agenda notice, but it, since you will also be coordinating with the State Historic Preservation Office, in a sense, we're also dealing with them as a referral. So would somebody like to make a motion for acceptance and referral?
Some will.
Felix moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
And please silence that cellphone.
That's not a cellphone, this is a computer.
Oh, it's a computer.
That was my computer.
Well, silence the volume on your computer then, please.
No, my, my computer wants to talk.
Well, then, take it outside and talk to it. Well, then, take it outside and talk to it. All right, well, thanks. Oh, yeah, so we do have a acceptance form for the applicant, so there you go. Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome, thank you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let me get my stuff organized here.
Welcome back.
Yes, deja vu going on.
Welcome back to our meeting.
I see you brought in a lot of audience.
It's a bigger crowd now than there was, so.
So this project review is, again, TL Holdings of New York, three lot subdivision, or to review submission made by the applicant's representative on October 26, 2022, draft environmental assessment form, part two, draft EAF, part three, and draft negative declaration. So welcome back, Brian, and, and I think we already talked about the plan, but if you have anything else that you want to go over?
No, I think we're set again. I think we've revised the SWIP. And if I submitted that, I don't think there's too much left on that. It was a basic SWIP just because of disturbance, so just erosion, sediment control. The driveway is existing. It is 18 feet wide. Any improvements, obviously, we'd need a DOT permit, we're in process of, along with that driveway with the wetland permit, we're in process with the DEC. We've already done a couple submissions with the Board of Health and Soil Tests. I believe with the Board of Health, we're waiting on something from the board to, in terms of possibly a preliminary approval or NAGDEC or such that demonstrates to the Board of Health that we're on the open up here.
All right. Well, why don't we go to CPL's engineering memo, and John, if you can go over that briefly?
Yeah, they've addressed the, the majority of our previous comments. The, the remaining comments, Mr. Watts just described the majority of those. Really, it's regulatory, other regulatory agency approvals for the wetland, for the driveway, and Health Department, and also getting us a formal, or getting our office and Dominic's office a, a formal legal description for the proposed driveway easement, which will include the utilities for maintenance. And that's, that's all we have left.
So that sounds pretty straightforward, but if there are any questions at this point from board members, this would be a good time. And then we'll go to the seeker documents.
Yeah, no comments here.
All right. Okay. Well, John, would you like to go ahead and review the, we've got the environmental assessment form draft, part two, and part three, and a draft NAGDEC. So why don't we do all those together, and then we'll address them one by one?
Okay, so we'll start with the part two, item number one, impact on land. We checked that, yes. Two potential small impacts that we noted. That being 1A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet. And F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. However, by using proper construction techniques, they should not be issues. Item two, we checked no. That's impact on geological features. Impacts on surface water, we checked yes. Again, identified two potential small impacts. 3D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or in the better banks of any other water body. And 3K, the proposed action may require the construction of a new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. They describe the, the wetland buffer disturbance permit they're pursuing, and they also will be required to get Health Department approval for the, the new septic systems. Next one, and please jump in if I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions. Impact on groundwater, we checked that, yes. Again, identified two potential small impacts. 4A, the proposed action may require new water supply wells, or create additional demand on supplies from existing wells. And 4C, the proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services. This is pretty common for any type of development such as this, so. Let's see, impact on flooding, we checked that, yes. And identified 5D, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. With their proposed grading plan, that, that becomes a mitigated item. So, again, a small, potential small impact. Impacts on air, we checked no. Impacts on plants and animals, we checked yes. Again, another small, potential small impact identified. 7B, the proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species. And this is very common for pretty much any project in the Hudson Valley now. The Indiana bat gets identified as, you know, a species that could potentially use these, these properties when they're developed. So put proper notes on the plans as to when to cut trees, and that, that's pretty much the mitigation. Eight, impact on agricultural resources, we checked that, yes. Again, another potential small impact. 8D, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural land. Either, well, you know, I don't know if that this one really does apply. What's your, your, your total disturbance is, how much?
I believe it is, it is under five acres.
Well, yeah. Is it more than two and a half?
I don't believe so. A lot of the stuff we are proposing is on areas where there was already a lot of trails. This whole area into the surrounding properties include, we don't show them everywhere, but all these light grays. Areas are existing, cleared areas, you can actually just go on Google Earth, and you can see them from the, from the satellite images quite clearly, and they're.
Yeah, actually, I, I'm looking at our, our giraffe NAGDEC, and, and we identified the disturbance as 2.2 acres. So really, we should just check this one as a, as a no, because we're, we don't exceed that two and a half acre threshold. Is everyone okay with that?
Well, I guess the only question on that is, this, this actually, I think, is identified in a, one of the county ag districts. And so it might not be a bad idea to flag it in the EAF part two. And then I think the way you handled it in the NAGDEC, I think that's number six. In the NAGDEC, skipping ahead to that, you indicate that the site's not currently being utilized as farmland, and does not appear to have been. You know, I think that pretty much covers it, so I don't think we need to change.
Okay, yeah, then, yeah, it's, it's really.
Six of one and half a dozen of the other, but it doesn't hurt to mention that it is in the ag district, so.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as is. Moving on, impact on aesthetic resources, we checked no. 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources, we checked yes. Again, identified as a small impact. 10B, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the Shipoh inventory. And you guys did get the, the letter from OPRHP saying that there were no issues. Impact on open space and recreation, no. Impact on critical environmental areas, we did check that, yes. 12A, the proposed action may result in a reduction in the quantity of the resource or characteristic basis for designation of the critical environmental area. So this must have been identified through the, the EAF mapper as a potential critical environmental area. Based on the amount of disturbance, it doesn't, it's a, considered a, a small impact. 13 and 14, impact on transportation and impact on energy, we both, we're both checked no. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light, we checked yes. Again, identifying 15A is a potential small impact. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. That would be during construction activity, so it would be temporary, and that's the reason why it's considered a, a small impact. 16, impact on human health, we checked that, no. And same for both 17 and 18, consistency with community plans and consistency with community character. And that, that takes us through the part two.
And then the part three is really just kind of administrative paperwork.
Right. Assuming you're all in agreement with how we identified the potential impacts.
Any questions or comments on the EF part two while we're still thinking about it?
In agreement with everything John said, so.
Sound good, okay. Why don't we quickly go to the draft NAGDEC, and then we'll come back to them all for consideration?
Okay, the, the draft NAGDEC you have should say draft number two dated November 4th. I'm not going to read the description of the action, so if we skip to the second page, under reasons for supporting this determination, the planning board makes the following findings supporting and substantiating this determination. One, the proposed action will disturb approximately 2.2 acres within the 66.39 acre project site. Although 0.53 acres of the developed site will be impervious, the remaining 64.19 acres, or approximately 96.7%, will be pervious area consisting of lawn landscaped areas, gravel areas, non-vegetated areas, and existing vegetation, including a wetland. A preliminary SWIP has been submitted for the proposed project. The proposed site development has been situated to maintain existing drainage patterns where possible. The plans include provisions for water quantity, well, no, they don't. The plans include, I got to revise that. They don't qualify to require water quantity and quality control for this development. The stormwater management measures indicated on the plans and incorporated into the project design include both temporary and permanent measures to address water quantity, quality, and erosion and sediment control. Also, areas disturbed for development that do not contain buildings and other impervious area will be stabilized as lawn and landscaped areas, which further prevent sedimentation. Properly implemented, the proposed measures reduce the likelihood of any adverse impact occurring. Two, the project site includes approximately 10.73 acres of wetlands. As noted above, a preliminary SWIP has, has been submitted for the proposed development. The proposed site development has been situated to maintain existing drainage patterns where possible. I got to get rid of that sentence about water quantity and control again. The stormwater management measures indicated on the plans and incorporated into the design include both temporary and permanent measures to address water quantity, quality, and erosion and sediment control. Properly implemented, the proposed measures reduce the likelihood of any adverse impact occurring. Three, approximately 0.5 acres of wooded area will be removed, which may adversely impact a federally threatened Indiana bat if not done at the appropriate time. Notation included on the, the plat stating tree clearing note. Tree clearing shall only occur between October 15th and March 31st due to potential Indiana bat roosting areas. And that's pretty standard for what DEC requires. For the site is adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the Shipoh site inventory. However, none of the historic areas on, on, were identified on the site, and there should be no adverse, adverse impact to the historic site. OPRHP issued a letter dated June 28, 2022, stating that it is the opinion of their department that no properties, including archaeological and or historic resources, listed in or eligible for the state and national register of historic places, will be impacted by this project. Five, the proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution during the construction phase. However, this will be mitigated by the fact that construction will be temporary. All work will follow requirements of the town zoning code, chapter 108, noise, section three, including adhering to working hours between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Following construction, noise generated by the development will be consistent with other similar uses in the project area along Route 52. Six, the proposed site has been identified as within an agricultural district. However, the site is not currently being utilized as farmland, and it's not appear to have been. Excuse me. The site also houses bedrock and wetlands. Seven, the proposed site is located within town official act for protection zone and must comply with section 150-79 Act for Protection Overlay Zone Regulations of the Town Code. And eight, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, flooding, or groundwater, air, aesthetic, open spaces and recreation, and energy resources, or transportation systems, or human health.
Okay, just to make sure we understand the revisions you wanted to see. And number one, in the second paragraph, we're taking out that sentence that says, "The plans include provisions for water quantity and quality control in conformance with current stormwater regulations."
Correct.
We're just deleting, deleting that. And then down in number two.
Says same sentence repeated.
The plans include provisions for water quantity and quality control, okay, that sentence comes out. And then in number seven, the, the new town regulations for aquifer protection. I think basically the only thing that really would apply here is the size of the lots, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that the size, they're way oversized lots, and they would comply with that provision.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
The word adopted after eight has two As at the beginning, so I may just want to strike one of those out. It's just a typo.
Where is it?
Adopted after, after number eight.
Adopted.
While you're mentioning that, the last little thing where it says copy the nurse, that should be brought to the next page. And then. that should be brought to the next page. And then there's a space between Dominic's name and then Joel's, so I'll take that out as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the draft neg deck?
No.
All right, Dominic, are you okay with all this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, first, let's see if we can get a motion to approve the EAF parts two and three for the TL Holdings three lot subdivision as discussed tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign these.
Second?
Anthony moved, Felix seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the negative declaration for the TL Holdings three lot subdivision as discussed and revised tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it?
I move it.
Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that passes seven to zero. Okay, we're getting there. So I guess the next question is, should we ask Dominic to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and perhaps conditional final approval for the next meeting?
If you don't, I will.
Why don't you ask?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Well, I was gonna ask if, if board members are okay with that, but since we have a motion, we can discuss it further if needed. So Anthony makes a motion. This is to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval. Is that what you're moving?
Yes, conditional final, yes.
For the TL Holdings three lot subdivision for the board's consideration at the December eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. All right, so everybody is okay with this?
One more vote and find out, I guess.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. So we'll be back for the next meeting with a resolution to consider.
Yes, just one clarification, if I may.
Okay.
I don't see a reason not to include both preliminary and conditional final, but I was wondering if the applicant representatives had any thought on that as to whether or not they would prefer to have only preliminary approval at this time.
Preliminary and final in one document would be satisfactory.
I, I didn't, I didn't think that the conditions would likely change between preliminary and conditional final for this particular project, so I, I have no problems presenting that and having the board consider that at your meeting next month.
Okay. And I guess the only difference would be if, if there does need to be any kind of extension of the resolution, it would just be basically what it would be for a final approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right, any other questions?
I think we're all set here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application tonight is Foman Wash, amended site development plan, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Let me just get my stuff together here. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Good evening. So why don't you give us a quick update on the planned revisions that you worked on and submitted?
Yep. Good evening, everybody. I'm JD Singh with Mori Architects. Gary Baywright's here from Foman Wash. So we have updated our plans since we last met with you at the October meeting, and I'll just run through a couple of, the major revisions that we've made to the plan set tonight. First change we made was at the entrance to the property, the main entrance here. We looked at opening this curb up, so we were able to have some better traffic flow coming out and try to ease some of the congestion there. We actually took up a, the end vacuum space here and enlarged this curb, made a wider radius, and I think that's really gonna help people getting in and out of the site. Also, on this main site plan, we, CPL asked that we indicate the limit of the floodplain boundary, so you can kind of see that there where the, where the cursor is. And then there, this was originally two parcels, but in discussion with the town assessor, it was combined at some point, so we have removed that lot line from the property, from the site plan here. So going down through the next page, that's just our survey. We've added all four elevations in color for the building that, I think you had asked about that at the last meeting, so we have all those on there. I do have color and material samples, if anybody would like to get a closer look at that. Certainly, I'll pass those around. Essentially, they're the same colors that you've probably seen at the, the new Poughkeepsie location or the Woffentures location. But yeah, they're, they're here for you to take a look at.
Thanks.
We updated our landscaping plan. Some of the comments from the board had to do with incorporating more evergreen species into the plans. We also are maintaining the street trees at the front of the property now. Originally, we had talked about maybe replacing those, but they were actually trimmed and they, they look good, but, so we've supplemented that with some landscaping in that area, but we're maintaining those trees as they are today. And then our lighting plan. Originally, our lighting plan just included the, the new task lighting that's located on the, the vacuum arches, but we are now, we're showing the, the lighting that's coming from the existing poles that are over the entire site. So that's indicated on the plan now. We've toned down the, the arches, the task lighting in the arches a little bit. There was some comment about that being maybe a little bright, so we've dimmed them down some. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is we have been in contact with the village regarding the connection, our connection to their utilities. So we sent them a email, and they did respond, and I'll submit that correspondence in our, our next submission, but they essentially said if we're not significantly increasing our flows, that they don't have any concerns with our project. So that's basically what we've updated since we've been here last time, and look forward. Any questions or comments you might have?
What did you do with the vacuums?
What did we do with the vacuums?
Yeah, we talked about the vacuums, or we've been somewhat.
Well, one of the comments from the county was to locate the vacuums up on the north side of the building. So those vacuum, I mean, we, we essentially think that that's not a good place for the vacuums. They're not really visible to customers. They would be underutilized, so we, we really don't think that that's a good idea. We, we did remove the one vacuum that I pointed out when we, when we opened up this curb at the front of the site, but other than that, we, I thought the discussion at the last meeting was, the board was okay with the vacuums, how we had them configured.
Okay.
I, I don't remember. The anticipated water usage is anticipated to be the same as it currently is, because you have the same car wash that you've had, and then you have the, the second one.
Yes, so we're adding the touch-free car wash, but we're also gonna be installing a water reclamation system, which it takes water. It's not wastewater, but water that's used in the wash process. It goes through settling tanks and gets treated, and then it reintroduces that back into certain parts of the car wash. So it recycles the water, and we end up actually using less water than what'll be, what's used right now. So we've, he's implemented that at the, at the Poughkeepsie site, and it's really, it's a great benefit.
So to be clear, you're anticipating the, the usage actually going down based on your calculations?
It could go down. I mean, it's, I guess Gary might be able to explain it a little bit better than I, but during certain parts of the, during certain times of the year, it will go down, but we don't anticipate it going up.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand how that's reported to the village. That's, because the village is gonna want to know that, right?
Yes. I, well, I explained the water reclamation in our emails, and I'll be providing that to the board, but essentially, we explained to them that wouldn't, would not be going up.
Yeah, because you're going from one wash to two washes.
Yes.
And it will go up.
Correct.
Okay, there's logic in that.
Village is gonna review it. I guess it would be in their, in their purview.
Yeah, as long as you provide the, you know, the data from experiences with other car washes, for instance, would probably be good.
Okay.
Any other questions before we get to CPL's engineering memo?
Well, one, I'm assuming we left the parking as you originally requested, because I remember the county asking for less parking.
Yeah.
But you said you really need that for your clientele, for your employees.
Yeah, we have, I think on the north side, there's six or eight or nine spaces there, but, you know, they anticipate having possibly four-ish, five employees, and then with turnover between shifts and whatnot, and then, you know, there'll be a, a manager that may come or a, a maintenance technician, so those spaces really will get used.
Are you planning on putting in an electric charging station in one of those spots for any of your employees in the future gets an electric car?
I think, well, we have thought about that for the customer spaces, but it doesn't seem that the customers spend enough time there really for the charge.
I was talking about the employees.
Yeah, don't, there, do you think there's any demand for employees at charging stations?
The future.
Yeah, if we can look at that. I mean, I guess we'll discuss that, and we can bring it up to the, we'll bring it back to the board in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think Fred is right to ask, because, you know, with any changes in a, in existing business, it's a good opportunity to try to upgrade to something like that.
Okay.
Or at least leave the provision there, so that it could just, you know, stand or whatever, you know, could be added later on very easily.
Yeah.
How many employees did you say would be there at your time?
A usual shift is four or five employees.
Yeah, it would be up to five, if you'd say, you know, three or four would be average.
Are we requesting sidewalk on that, sir?
We discussed it at the last meeting, and I, if I remember right, I think we discussed it and didn't think it was necessary at that particular part of Route nine, but I, does anybody remember that conversation differently?
That's my record.
Okay, because we do have that subdivision just up from it, so people who are gonna come from there, but they're gonna walk down to the shop right.
Which subdivision are we talking about?
Oh, no, you know, it's, I don't remember the discussion of the sidewalk exactly, but, you know, we're gonna have to start sometime. And.
Well, what do other board members think? We already kind of went through this, but...
All right, I'm just, just from our other stuff that we do.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true. I mean, we, and we do have a complete streets policy, but the question is, is this location on Route nine a location where a sidewalk would be, you know, desirable?
Because if you have, well, you have a vacant lot to the left of him looking at it, and then you have the attorney and Paul, got the name of the bank, Pauling? It's not Pauling, it's, uh, Hutton County, Hutton County Savings Bank and the attorney there on the corner. And then you have that whole, you know, subdivision there, so if anybody's gonna be walking in the future, walk the shop right.
The car wash?
Well, you walk by the car wash, and then you have the Mavis Tire, and then you have another, basically that's it. And then you, that property, I guess, it, you know, crosses over the small stream, and then that shop right.
Yeah, would that stream prohibit pedestrians, or I'm not sure?
Well, well, right, well, that's, that's DOT, and that's, we're gonna request a lot of things from DOT in the future to connect it all. But if you gotta start somewhere, starting to connect it.
Well, how about, what would the board consider that we put a provision if sidewalks come there, that we would do ours at the same time?
Legally, sir?
There probably could be a mechanism as a condition of the approval that would require that. We would have to look at the code and see what sureties the town could have to make sure that that would occur in place.
I believe the oh nine plan required it, if at the request of us, a comprehensive plan.
Well, the, yeah, the two thousand and nine plan and now the, now the, now the plan update that we're working on, I wouldn't say requires the installation of sidewalks, but it, it allows the planning board or other boards that are considering development proposals to, to consider requiring it. It's not a mandatory thing, but it's a suggested thing that's a good idea to do if it's feasible.
Yeah, because you, because you have about thirty or forty houses in that subdivision.
Again, I'm not sure what subdivision you're talking about.
The Hunt subdivision, the Hunt subdivision, the one across from the cemetery.
Okay.
But if you don't get Mavis and the other side, it's just gonna have a sidewalk to nowhere.
The other side's tougher, because you have the cemetery.
I mean, if a mechanism could be done that, that would put a provision in that would require it, or have the owner put one in in the future, date if, if sidewalks were added along nine in that area, that, that, I, I would support that. But I don't know if that's something that can easily be done here. I don't think we've done that before.
No, but it's, I like the concept.
No, I like the idea.
I think it's reasonable, because we're also the smallest lot across all of these properties, so to put ours in is, you know, it doesn't seem practical, but we'd certainly do it if everybody else does.
Yeah, and that's, the other question then is, working with state DOT, I've noticed that they've done some major improvements along portions of Route nine with adding sidewalks in particular. And the question is, you know, are they gonna be doing that in other areas and making it basically a state project? Which would definitely be a good thing, and we should, you know, as a planning board, we should work with the state to encourage that, because I, there was a, a large area of sidewalks that were just added within the last month or so, north of the town of Fishville, but I think it's probably in, might even be in the town of Poughkeepsie. So it's a good question as to how, you know, whether the state has some capital program or, or something in the works for really extending sidewalks in all areas on Route nine. It's not a bad idea. So anyway, I think Dominic, if, when we get to a resolution, if you could start thinking ahead of perhaps some language that we could incorporate as a condition for the future provision of a sidewalk.
Yes. I, I think, you know, in thinking ahead on it in terms of future submissions, I would also recommend at this point that a obligation regarding the commitment, rather, to do that would also be added to a, the site plan as a note.
Okay.
Because if it's on the site plan as a note, it's also enforceable by the building inspector at a time when, you know, it comes into play.
Yeah, yeah, we can put it in as future on the plan. Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for bringing that up, Fred. That's a good idea. All right. Any other questions before we get to CPL's memorandum? Or why don't we just go to that, and then we can have time for more questions later? So John, if you could go over your memo?
Sure. They mentioned that they have had correspondence with the village about their water sewer use, and so we'll... their, uh, water sewer use, and so we'll look forward to seeing that. Um, on the plans, the, our comments three through five are really just for clarification purposes. Um, comment six, can you go to the, the site plan on the, on the first sheet?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, so I have to apologize for that, cuz I thought we cleaned that up, and we did.
Okay, so you, you see what I'm looking at? There's just...
Yeah, I know, we have a layer that's frozen or something.
Okay, yeah, there, there's just a, a leader saying relocated light, but it's not really pointing at anything, so I just, I wasn't sure if they, uh, just missed that, or, but it sounds like, okay, so...
If I can figure out a slide over there, I'll show it to you, but essentially, that there's a light in one of those islands, and since the island's moving, the light happens.
Yeah, I, I see it on the existing one, it's just in the proposed one, it doesn't show up.
Yeah, there's a little arrow right there, and the fixture just got, uh, frozen, so we'll fix that.
Okay.
But it's moving like four feet.
Right, okay, very good. And then, uh, the balance of our comments is really, um, just the board, it, you know, reviewing and accepting the landscaping, the revised landscaping and lighting plans, and the materials that they submitted tonight.
Yeah, any, any follow-up comments from the board on, I know last meeting, we did talk about the landscaping in particular, um, and it appears to me that the, uh, the suggestions that we and the county had on landscaping were incorporated, um, and the lighting plans, I think that, that addresses any concerns that we had. One thing I noticed was, so, I, I appreciate the, um, the new configuration for the site entrance, I think that will help, and it, um, it basically is increasing the entrance area on the interior approach, not so much at the point of contact with Route 9, but for cars being able to exit the site, it'll make it much easier. Um, but I did notice on sheet SP1, which is the grading and utility plan, um, that incorrectly shows the curbed island unchanged from the existing, so that's the one sheet that I think needs to be corrected.
Yeah, he'll, we'll update that.
Yeah, and I think that was done by a different, um, shop.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, we'll get that fixed.
Okay, no problem. So, any other questions from board members? Questions, comments?
A little weird thing, um, at the other site in Fishkill, I don't know if this is gonna have the same kinda issue of like, when you try to use it later in the night, like there's a lot of loitering, or do you wanna say? I'm sure you guys are cognizant of that, right? I, I don't know, I don't know what you can do, but...
You know, the, being that this isn't really the self-serve, I think, I think people loiter there because they, they're washing their cars, and the kids are hanging out, and, you know, they can gather there, but being that it's really not that kind of operation, I don't think we're gonna have the same issue here, you know, we, we certainly don't now, so I, I don't think it's gonna happen up here.
Well, so this was classified as a type-two action at the last meeting, so no further environmental review necessary. Um, so I guess at this point, I wanted to see what the board's opinion was on possibly scheduling a public hearing for the upcoming meeting on December 8th, um, and then also getting, uh, input from Dominic and John on that. What does the board think?
Yeah, we were, just making sure everybody was okay with the, the rendering and the color board, I guess, that was passed around. I, I mean, from my standpoint, it's the standard color scheme that I think most of us in the area are familiar with, so, I mean, uh, from my standpoint, I didn't see anything that jumped out as, uh, a problem, but I, I think that, that's what you were getting at, yeah.
Everyone okay with that? I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Anyone else have any, uh, observations or objections to the architectural?
No.
Okay, okay, so...
Have a public hearing.
Would someone like to make a motion, or do we, do we wanna discuss?
I will make a motion to have a public hearing.
All right.
At the next available time.
All right, that was Fred emphatically indicating that he's making a motion. Uh, is there a second?
I'll emphatically second.
Okay, Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that passes seven to zero, so we need to identify a number and location of signs for the public hearing. I think that's, it's kind of a no-brainer, right?
One sign.
One sign.
Out front.
At the entrance on Route 9, not directly on Route 9.
Not directly at the entrance, no, no, in the middle.
In the middle of Route 9, yeah.
Yeah, there are three lanes, the middle of the lot.
It's nice to have a cut-and-dry one like this, where we can all agree on, on the spot.
Maybe that, that public hearing will have more people. Maybe, maybe not. Well, so here's another question. I mean, this isn't mandatory, but should the board authorize Dominic to perhaps draft a resolution of maybe preliminary approval for consideration, depending how the public hearing goes, but we could conceivably authorize the preparation of a resolution. Could be...
Is that okay?
It could be for preliminary, it could also be with conditional final approval.
It, it, it could, I wouldn't know what, uh, would change between preliminary and conditional final for this site plan as well.
Other than those minor corrections that we talked about.
You're assuming there won't be any changes suggested by the public?
Yeah, so let me ask this, would, would you be able to make those corrections that we discussed, um, in time for the submission deadline before the December 8th meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the deadline, David?
Sorry?
What's the deadline for December 8th?
November 23rd.
Twenty, yeah, before, thanks.
Do we, do we think the county, do we think the county might still offer any suggestions that could change this?
They're still about to resend items to, unless it's significant changes.
Yeah, and I don't think there have been any significant changes.
I mean, they, they said it was, uh, they had comments, but it was, they said, matter of local concern.
Correct.
Right, and I think you did incorporate, um, quite a bit of what they had suggested with the landscaping, and, I mean, there, there were some things about the number of parking spaces, but that, those are kind of discretionary in terms of what the county comments on. Okay, um, so, would somebody like to make a motion to authorize Dominic to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval for the Farm and Wash Amendment Site Development Plan 778 Route 9 for the board's consideration at the December 8th meeting? Would someone like to move that?
Some will.
Felix, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Bob.
Two people, Bob seconded it. All right, any further discussion? And again, that would be, um, just available for the board's review, should the public hearing go well, and, you know, assuming nothing else comes up. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero.
I don't have to show up.
Okay, yes, that could be another very populated public hearing.
I think it's approved.
Or not, depending on how interested people are in, in this particular application.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're all set for tonight.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Good night.
Yeah, I'll take that package here, man.
All right, how are we doing? Yeah, we're doing pretty well.
Hi, Felix.
Okay, well, the next application is Fishkill Self-Storage Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan, for to review submission made by the applicant's representative on September 28th, 2022, and to consider declaring itself lead agency for the project. Welcome, Mr. Glad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, so, let me just start off, um, briefly here. So, we had the notice of intent for the Town of Fishkill Planning Board to serve as lead agency, um, sent out, and that was circulated to involved and interested agencies on September 16th, and so the required 30 days has passed, and no objections to the planning board serving as lead agency were received. Um, at the August 11th planning board meeting, the planning board authorized our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to provide an analysis of Mr. Glad's submissions regarding the lot size of the subject property, and to report back to the board as to whether or not the lot being less than the required five acres in the RB zoning district results in issues regarding a deficient lot area. Um, so Dominic prepared and submitted a report to the board in a memo dated November 3rd. Um, so what I'd like to do first is ask Dominic to review your report and conclusions, and that, then we'll let Mr. Glad, um, jump in and respond after Dominic finishes, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you. So, I, as you said, I did prepare a memo to the board in response to the applicant's submission that demonstrated that this was a lot that is less than five acres in size, so it doesn't meet the bulk area requirements, uh, for development within that zone, and that the lot itself was created, uh, prior to the zoning restrictions being put into place. The, uh, there's no, uh, in my mind, uh, debate or, or, uh, or dispute regarding that set of facts, it's, the question is, what does it mean? And there is a provision within the Town of Fishkill zoning code that, which I provide the analysis in my memo, uh, that the applicant, uh, had proposed, uh, meant that the project could proceed without variances for the deficient lot area. And a plain reading of section, and we're talking about sections 130-29, uh, indicate that an undersized lot that meets certain criteria is entitled to a building permit. That's what it says. It doesn't say that an undersized lot is entitled to site plan approval or special permit approval. So, if you have an undersized lot within a zone, uh, it, it's not precluded from development. In other words, it can't be kept, like, vacant forever just because it's an undersized lot. A owner of an undersized lot is entitled to, uh, put their property to some use, but it doesn't mean that they're entitled to put their property to any use without the need for variances. That's really the sum and substance of the provision. Uh, if the intent was to, uh, make it so that the, any undersized lot was also entitled to, say, special permit use, uh, then the code could have been and should have been written that way, but I don't believe that there's any ambiguity in the code at all, because it says that a undersized lot meeting certain conditions is entitled to the issuance of a building permit. Doesn't say anything about any type of planning board approval. And so as a result, the board had previously circulated for lead agency, uh, that notice has gone out, the time has more than elapsed, so a couple of procedural items for the board to consider taking tonight would be to confirm your status as lead agency, and you could also refer this matter to the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, for the variances that will be required, in particular, the variance that, uh, the lot itself is undersized for the proposed use. Bear in mind that the proposed use is not a permitted use within the zone, uh, it is not a specifically enumerated use within this particular zone, within the restricted business zone. It's a use that's not allowed in that zone, but the applicant is making a application to the board, uh, to apply the special use permit provisions that allow this board to make a determination with input from the building inspector that the use is similar, uh, to other uses within the zone, and that the board could allow the use to move forward under the special use permit provisions. So, that's a decision that the board ultimately will have to make in connection with this application, um, but there's a number of, uh, environmental concerns and, uh, technical review that have yet to been commenced. Uh, the only submission that's been made to date has been the initial concept plan approval, uh, along with some initial, uh, application materials by the applicant.
Okay, well, first, let me just ask planning board members if you have any questions on Dominic's memo.
Isn't that the function of the Zoning Board of Appeals, to really determine that?
Determine what?
Whether this use could be used there?
Well, there is provision that they're, that they're taking advantage of within the, uh, zoning code that does allow, uh, the, this planning board to, um, allow uses that are not allowed in the zone, uh, as long as the board finds that they're similar to other uses that are allowed in the zone.
Well, let me think. I thought that was their function, it's, you know...
I think that's right in the code.
Yeah.
It's right in the code. There's a part of the code that is actually, this is why we're here, you know, determining this.
Yeah, it's, uh, section 15019B, I think.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. But there's, there's, that's, there's two separate issues, and one goes to the ultimate use of the property, and then this initial, uh, issue that's been raised by the applicant is whether or not they need a variance for a deficient lot size for any use within that zone. The answer is, is that they don't need a variance if it's an application that just requires a building permit and not planning board approval.
So, just, just from my education, so if this was only three acre parcel, it could still be able to put in a storage unit in there?
Well, that's, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure on...
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, I, I think perhaps, like, the issues are getting conflated, um, you know, let's, let's separate out the zoning issue as to whether or not it's a permitted use or a special permitted use, or it's not allowed in the zone at all. The code provides that if you have an undersized lot, and that undersized lot meets certain criteria, including the fact that it was created prior to the zoning restrictions being put into place, so it's historically, you know, predates the zoning, and it also was not owned by, jointly with other property, so the same person didn't own multiple lots, uh, so that they could have been developed together and then not be undersized. And if you, in that scenario, the code provides that you can go to the building inspector, and once he confirms that those criteria have been met, then you can get a building permit. That's the, all that it says. It doesn't say that you can get a, uh, building permit for a site plan or special use, uh, permitted use. What I've recommended to the board in my legal analysis is, is that in order to, uh, develop this property for self-storage, the applicant has an undersized lot, and that requires a variance for the lot area, and so I'm recommending to this board that you refer this matter to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that they can, so, and so I think...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I thought, I thought...
I went, sure, what you were saying before that was okay, but then...
Yeah, but I thi, I think we were conflating the, the two issues, cuz I thought you were talking about the use of, you know, so what, what the zoning board would be considering would be the use in connection with the size of the lot. This board also has jurisdiction to say that the use, although not allowed in the zone, is substantially similar, or not, to uses, uh, that are allowed in the zone. I hope that makes sense.
And there is a list of a number of criteria that the planning board would have to look at to make that determination.
Correct. 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 Once you have all the information in front of you.
Yeah.
But, but, but you still need to go to ZBA for the variance, though?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So.
The use, the use requires five acres in, in the lot. There's no dispute that the lot's four point seven acres in size, and there's also no dispute that historically portion of the lot was taken for highway development. You know, I, I, I think that it's clear, I mean, the applicant has clearly demonstrated that that's what occurred here, you know. The question is, what, what does that entitle them to? Entitles them to the use of their property for a building permit?
Yeah.
In my opinion.
But what they're going to use the permit for?
Correct.
Is the question.
Well, it entitles them to go to the building inspector and get a building permit. There are not, there are certain building, there are certain uses that don't require planning board approval, you know, so. Like a single-family residence. And to develop the property with a single-family residence would make it so that someone who owned it wasn't deprived of all use of their property. It's really kind of a relief valve, this provision, that says if you have an undersized lot, you can still use it. Doesn't necessarily mean you can use it for anything that you want to use it for, you know, so.
Yeah, well, and it's.
Yeah, so please go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I just want to say, it's, it's not for the use we're proposing, any permitted commercial use in the HB district requires five acres, so whatever proposal we came forward with, I guess we would be in the same situation. And I do just want to note that we did file a letter after we got Dominic's response to the billing inspector, just to take a swing at seeing if he, as the town official with the authority to interpret the code, had any different of an opinion. So I, I guess we're just, at some point, gonna get a response back from Joel, but I'm sure he'll consult with his attorneys and who've already expressed their clear opinions, so.
Well, that, I mean, so that, we did receive a copy of a letter to Mr. Petrus today that does make a request of him on this particular issue. And the thing is, is that this application is pending before this board. And so there are certain procedural steps that you can and may want to consider taking. So this brings me back to my recommendation is, is that you did circulate for lead agency. You know, the time has elapsed, no one has opposed that, so you can confirm your status as lead agency. And if you agree with the analysis that I set forward in my memo, you could also refer this matter to the zoning board of appeals. These, you have an independent jurisdiction and because of the submission to the building inspector doesn't halt or, you know, necessarily require you to take any particular action. And in fact, by making the referral, you, to the zoning board of appeals, you're continuing to move the project along and giving the applicant the ability to seek the relief that they need, or if they choose to do so.
Does the, does the building inspector have sole jurisdiction to say that this use is, in fact, allowable on this lot?
No. So, the, the request was just related to that bulk question and what that code provision means as far as how far does it go to protect legally pre-existing non-conforming lots that don't meet the minimum acreage for the district? So that, our request relates only to that, but as far as, then the other bucket, which is the use question, what the code says is that the planning board makes the decision, but it's supposed to be in consultation with the building inspector. And I think at some point, if I remember, a meeting or two ago, you might have referred it to the building inspector, too.
No.
No, not yet?
No.
Okay. Well, I guess that's still a step that needs to be taken to get, also get his input on the use question. And I don't disagree with anything on process that Dominic said. I guess I just want to discuss with the board when you would expect us to go before the zoning board of appeals, because there are two issues kind of with us going to them right away, is, one, if you're doing a coordinated seeker review, the, the ZBA cannot take any action until this board renders a seeker determination as the lead agency. Also, we wouldn't want to go for a use if you don't agree with us on the substantial similarity test, too, because, and we still also have that use determination hanging out there. So I guess just we're looking for some feedback and direction from the board on, if you do make that referral, when you expect us to go, plus there's some things that could come out of the planning process that need additional variances that we wouldn't want to have to go back to the ZBA twice.
Yeah, so that's really more of a timing issue than anything else.
Yeah, I, I guess just, I wanted to make sure you didn't expect us to try to go get some sort of indication from the ZBA that they would grant us an area variance for the four point seven acres before moving forward with the other stuff before this board.
Well, then I have another question. If the zoning board of appeals does not approve it, what happens at that point if we're considerably going on?
Could, could you restate that louder, because I couldn't even hear what you said?
We need the mic.
Yeah, put it right up to the mic.
My question is, if the zoning board of appeal is going to be put onto this, and they do not approve the project as presented, that stops us, correct?
If they don't approve the variance.
Correct.
It does.
Correct. I mean, it, the, the project itself would, you know, not meet the code provisions in order to entitle it to approval, so.
So why? We're gonna wait for us to give them some kind of suggestion before they?
Well, the, the consequence of having a coordinated review, which is what seeker is set up to do, is, is that the, no board makes a decision until the environmental review has been looked at and, you know, identified and, you know, and impacts and mitigation measures proposed. So that's exactly the way that seeker was set up, was, you know, to make sure that, that boards aren't looking at pieces of a project in a vacuum. And so it, it does mean more time, it also means more work for the applicant. You know, there are significant traffic concerns, I think, in particular regarding this project and the likelihood that no left turns are going to be allowed out of this site. How one would mitigate for that, I think, is a significant issue. And this board, as lead agency, will have to take a close look at that type of impact, along with any other impacts associated with this proposal. But the zoning board of appeals, while they could start the review of a request for a variance, they could not conclude their review until this board completes the seeker process. Which is how it's actually, I mean, it's lengthy, it's costly to the applicant, but that's exactly how it's set up to work and intended to work.
So we need to determine if this use that's being proposed is similar to other allowable uses. That, to me, that seems to be the crux of this whole thing.
That's one of them.
It's one of the crux.
Sooner the better for us.
But as Dominic has, I think, stressed over and over again on this, because this isn't the first time we've talked about it, is that that whole process has to be done concurrently with seeker. And we can't make that determination of the use outside of the seeker process.
See, one of the things that the applicant, if I may, like, has, has argued is, is that the traffic for a self-storage facility is going to be less than actual permitted uses that are within the zone. That was a key part of their initial application. But this board will have to review that information and decide whether or not, you know, there are significant impacts associated with traffic regardless of whether or not it's at a same or lesser value to other uses within the zone. So I, I think that there's a significant amount of information that you're entitled to and, and also, you know, review of, of that material prior to making any determinations.
Still confused. So, I hate.
I'm sorry. If I may jump in. I, I have one, a few questions, but the, the memo you sent to Joe Petrus, and, and this will be far concerned, what's the actual purpose that you're looking for?
I was looking for an interpretation from him to see if he had a contrary opinion on how far the protection of pre-existing non-conforming, that code provision goes.
Okay. So that brings me to my next one. So let's just say, and we've read, you know, your memo, let's say Mr. Petrus comes back with a different.
Something that this board doesn't agree with.
Yes. Where does, what happens then? Where does this go for the process?
Well, it, you know.
I, I would say we wouldn't need the variance.
It's an interesting scenario. Let me first point out that, that Mr. Glad's submission to Mr. Petrus does not actually mention my November third memo.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Nor, nor did it include a copy of it, so.
I was actually myself very, I, I didn't have a chance to read the whole letter because it came like hours before tonight's meeting. I was really quite disappointed that the letter was framed that way without even making mention of Dominic's memo.
Well, we notified Dominic can send it to him.
Yeah, see, you know, and like I was trying to suggest earlier is, is that Mr. Petrus, you know, has, he's the building inspector and he has his own process, but you're the planning board and you also have your own process. And so, you know, my advice is to acknowledge your status as lead agency and make the referral to the zoning board of appeals, you know. It may all wash out at the zoning board of appeals, you know, because, you know, if Mr. Petrus issues a opinion that is not in the applicant's favor, then one of the remedies that they have is also to appeal that to the zoning board of appeals as well. So they may end up there from more than one, you know, avenue. But either way, I, I think it goes to the zoning board of appeals.
So I think that answers my question, but I wanted to make sure I was clear, is that basically they're asking for an opinion from Mr. Petrus, but in a sense, that just gives us more information, it doesn't give us, doesn't tell us that we have to, like in other words, he's not, if his opinion is different than yours, it doesn't mean that your opinion is no longer valid, correct?
We would have to see what he says, to be honest, because he does have the ability to interpret the code and, you know, and unless, and if he makes it an interpretation that is not challenged to the zoning board of appeals, then his interpretation stands, so.
That, that is a fear of this planning board, at least several members of this planning board, and perhaps all of them, just from other projects, which is why we're spending so much time talking about it.
So ultimately, he's a competition wins?
Yeah, we just ran into that.
But this board is not in position of interpreting code, so, you know, I, I'd rather not get into, you know, different outcomes. I, that's why I'm suggesting that you focus on steps that you can take.
And New York State town law clearly gives the planning board authority to directly refer a matter like the lot size issue that we're talking about to the, directly to the zoning board of appeals, without it having to go through the building inspector.
That's correct.
Or the code enforcement officer.
That's absolutely correct.
And so if we do that tonight, it pretty much makes that letter moot, in my opinion. And I'm not an attorney, but I am a planning board chair. I, I think we really need to get straight in all of our minds, including the applicant, what this process is going to be, and so that it can go as smoothly as possible. Well, so.
Would you like to punt?
So there, there probably are other questions, but I just wanted to start off with a couple of, this is more than a couple of things, it's four things, I think, and as Dominic had mentioned, if the project review is to continue, it appears that there are at least four things that have to happen soon, real soon. So first, yeah, the planning board could and would have to declare itself lead agency to conduct the environmental review. And we can do that through a motion. In fact, why don't we go ahead and do that now, so that we can move on to the second, third, and fourth things? So would someone like to make a motion for the planning board to declare itself lead agency to conduct the environmental review of the proposed Fishkill self-storage facility at twelve ninety-two Route nine D?
So move.
Okay, Rob, you move it. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we have declared ourselves to be lead agency. Okay, so this one is a toughie, but it's got to be done. Second thing is that the applicant team would have to prepare a number of additional site development plan and specialty use permit details to complete the submission. These have been outlined in part in CPL's engineering memo dated August fifth, twenty twenty-two, and in Dutchess County Planning Zone Referral Response dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. By the way, in which the county determined that, that application was incomplete and would have to be resubmitted with the additional plan details and materials that have been outlined. So I'm not going to go through the whole list, although I could, but there's a whole list of things that have already been mentioned in those documents, ranging from a full SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, to all the expected site plan sheets, existing conditions and demolition plan sheet, grading plan, landscaping plan, planting schedule, planting details, utilities plan and details, including water supply connections, and septic system plans and details, erosion sediment control plan and details, drainage plan. Hope you're not trying to write these down. Construction details like dumpster enclosure, truck turning plan, site plan notes regarding tree cutting restrictions for Indiana bat, details of proposed signage, proposed limits of disturbance to be shown on the site plan, lighting plan, including a computer-generated photometric grid and lighting details, including cut sheets, traffic impact study to evaluate the traffic access and circulation and safety impacts, coordination with SHIPO regarding potential significant archaeological sites as identified in the EAF and possible need for a phase one archaeological study, and architectural details of the proposed building materials, colors, textures, including submissions of a material sample board. So that doesn't take any action on our part, that takes action on the applicant's part, really to get those things submitted so that we really have a, you know, in a sense, a in quotes, complete application, because we don't have that yet. The third thing, as Dominic suggests, is to refer the applicant to the zoning board of appeals, so that the applicant can apply for the necessary lot area variance in conjunction with the application before the planning board for site plan approval and special use permit approval. And as I think we've all heard already, a possible issue there is that since the planning board as lead agency is conducting a coordinated environmental review with other involved agencies, of which the ZBA would be one, it appears that the ZBA would not be able to take action on that variance request until the planning board has completed its environmental review, determination, and/or findings pursuant to seeker. Or, as Dominic stated in his memo, and I thought this was a good statement, alternatively, the applicant can apply for a building permit for any use that does not require a site plan or special use permit approval, such as a building permit for a single-family So we can deal with that in a minute, but I wanted to mention this, too. The fourth thing that I think needs to be addressed real soon by the board is being the possibility of considering a POSDEC, Positive Declaration of Environmental Significance, for the proposed self-storage facility, and requiring the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. So the seeker regulations in NYCRR Part six seventeen state that a lead agency should make a determination of significance as early as possible in the review process. And if, if the lead agency finds that it does not have sufficient information to make that determination, it may request that the applicant provide such information. If the lead agency determines that the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, weighing the criteria in Section six seventeen point seven C, then the. on the environment, weighing the criteria in Section 617.7C, then the lead agency should consider issuing a positive declaration. So, that's a lot to chew on, right? There's probably more than just those four things, and a fifth thing at some point, but I don't think tonight would be the appropriate night, would be the referral to Joel Petrus for his input and suggestions on the proposed use, not a determination, because that's not what Section 150-19B asked for. It specifically leaves that determination to the planning board. But let's not get confused with too many things at once. So, why don't we consider a motion about referring the applicant to the ZBA, so that the applicant can apply for the required area variance for deficient lot size in the RV restricted business zoning district? And that's assuming that the applicant would want to pursue that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Fred moves that. Is there a second?
Move second.
Felix seconds it.
I do have one further discussion on it.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I apologize.
Please, and others may as well.
Okay. So, again, maybe I'm stepping ahead of this, but we, if we refer to ZBA, and then Mr. Petrus makes a determination that no variance is needed, then they don't need to go to ZBA, is that correct?
Yes.
But I think.
I'm just asking a hypothetical question.
We would have to see exactly what they said and how it's said, you know. The board still has jurisdiction over this project and has a special permitted use. And, but the initial issue as to whether or not the lot size will be deficient could be determined by Mr. Petrus.
Right, I'm just talking about the lot size.
Yeah.
But to, before going to ZBA, we need an environmental review, right? We need to do that, right?
Before the ZBA can take final action on the area variance.
On the final action, when the applicant, yeah.
I mean, the application can be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
But before they take the final action, we, okay.
Yeah.
They could even open their public hearing and get initial feedback from the public and the zoning board of appeals, and help them to inform their path forward.
So that, okay, so we have time to do the environmental review.
Yeah, they could, they could start that process.
So, at this point, I'm not even sure that Joel has seen Dominic's memo on the area variance issue. And in my opinion, as chair of the planning board, I would certainly hope that Joel would review Dominic's memo in addition to the letter that Mr. Glad sent him, and be fully aware with his eyes open of what's going on here. And as Anthony has already stated, I don't want there to be any issues that we're going to have to feel really bad about. So I'm not making any threats, I'm just being very clear and open. This is something really important, and it's not something that should be, you know, I won't say taken lightly, but I can't think of any other way of saying it, on the part of the building inspector.
And I think there was a lot of public comment at the initial appearance, so that, and I, I think it's important that we say that here tonight. On the record, there were a lot of people, just for the initial appearance, that had a lot to say about this project, and I'm echoing your statement, John, that I hope that's being taken into consideration by all parties, really. I'm not directing at any one person in particular, but I think it's important to mention that there was a lot of interest in this. But there was a motion and a second, so.
So, yeah, we were still in discussion.
Well, I don't know if we're still in, but.
So, have we had enough discussion on that and ready for a vote?
Sure.
All right, this is the motion to refer this to the ZBA. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. And now, for the fourth, back to the fourth thing, which, again, just to remind you, because it's been about 15 minutes since I mentioned it, is the question of a positive deck on the overall SECA review. So the question would be, should the planning board authorize our consultants to prepare a draft EAF Parts 2 and 3, and a draft positive declaration for the board's consideration at the December 8th meeting? So, before I get a little bit further into that, I just wanted to double check with Dominic as to whether that would be an appropriate thing to do tonight.
Well, I concur, you cited the appropriate SECA regulation that said that determinations of significance should be made as early as possible in the process. And I think the board has already identified some significant environmental impacts associated with the proposal. And all you need is one.
Yeah, so let me, I sort of, kind of was thinking about it, and I wrote down a list that I think has already come up in planning board discussion, and what we've heard from the public already. Potentially significant environmental issues might include traffic access and circulation, the dangerous access to Route 9D at the I-84 interchange, especially the vehicles desiring to access the site southbound on 9D would most likely have to turn into a neighborhood road like Van Ness Road and make a U-turn to go back and enter the site northbound on 9D. There are potential impacts on the character of the adjacent residential neighborhood, including impacts of lighting, noise, and others. Question of consistency with the comprehensive plan, namely, being that the use is not permitted in the RV zoning district, and the lot size being deficient, might be things to consider in that. And then, potential controversy, as evidenced by informal public comments at the July 14th meeting, is certainly a factor that can be weighed into the decision as to whether to issue a POSDEC. So, is there a motion? Well, we can discuss it further, but is there a motion?
I would just like to note our objection to a POSDEC, I think it is too early in the process. I know what the regulations say, but, I mean, if you identify a potential impact, you should give an applicant a chance to respond to it. We haven't even prepared, we're in the process, but we, we still need to prepare and submit a full traffic report, so to speculate on the degree of impact there without any actual factual evidence being provided by us, I think is inappropriate.
Dominic, any thoughts?
I mean, you've, you've identified certain areas that you think are significant, and they're certainly something that we're looking at too, but we would also like the opportunity to actually prepare a report and submit it. We haven't even gotten that far yet.
What's, the applicant is, is suggesting is what I would refer to as an expanded Part 3, an EAF that has certain studies attached to it. It's typically made, you know, as part of an applicant's attempt to demonstrate that any relevant environmental impacts have been mitigated as a part of their proposal. As the chairman noted, you know, the application that's been submitted to date, you know, is short on relevant details, and it's not premature for the board to issue a positive declaration, because the board, in its own determination, can make the decision as to whether or not there exists the potential for significant environmental impacts. That's what the positive declaration means, means that there is the potential for significant environmental impacts, not whether or not they've been mitigated yet.
And also, with the recent amendments in the SECA regulations, if a positive declaration is issued, then scope, public scoping is required, which it didn't used to be. And the benefit of doing that very early in the process is involving the public and other involved agencies in the process of scoping. And so by making a, I mean, we, we can't make a determination tonight, but we can authorize our consultants to prepare a draft of the SECA documents that I mentioned, the Part 2 EAF, Part 3, which is key, and the draft positive declaration document.
I mean, I don't even know if your consultants have enough information to prepare Part 2 at this point.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know when I want to hear back from you, thank you. But I, I think, in my opinion, and based on what Dominic just said, I think it would be quite appropriate for the, or to authorize the preparation of those POSDEC documents or consideration. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to necessarily act on them next month, but if we so chose, we could. And we've done that before with other types of, of SECA documents, so. What do you think, Dominic?
I think it's appropriate for the board to consider drafts of those at your December meeting.
All right, so now, key to this is what, before we go to a motion and a vote, what do, what's the feeling of board members on this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, first, I'm trying to think, I don't know if we've done a POSDEC in this board in many years. I can't even remember if I've ever done one here, so it's kind of new for everybody here, because normally, we go through a whole process before we even get to a NEGDEC. And I feel a little uncomfortable moving it this quickly, because I don't feel I have enough information at this point, whether to go POSDEC or not. And, I don't know, I just, it's just me, I may be wrong, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable at this point that I feel like I have enough that I could go into that direction. And that's just me, I'm sorry, thank you.
So, let me ask this, Felix, what, what would you think you would need to see? I mean, for instance, I went through that list of submission items, which is quite extensive, which presumably, I mean, it's a lot of material, but it could be put together perhaps in time for submission for the next meeting, I don't know.
Maybe, I, I mean, a lot of it's on our engineer, Larry Padge, and I know he wanted to wait for the outside agency responses for the lead agency, to see if there was anything in there that would potentially change the plans before he started doing all the stuff like grading and stormwater.
Right.
And Dutchess County Planning, for example, did give us some things to think about with parking, so.
Yeah.
That, that is why we waited on kind of preparing those detail sheets and some of the other stuff.
But is that the kind of thing that would help you?
I, I believe, I just feel, like I said, normally, we're a little bit deeper with information from the applicant, and me, I feel like we have very little from the applicant at this point, and.
And understandably so, because I think as Mr. Glad has indicated, that it's been a, trying to figure out what this process is really going to be about.
Right, and I think all of us have been struggling with that here. So I, I just, I'll be honest, I don't feel comfortable at this point going in that direction immediately, I just, you know, that's my, that's where I'm at right now.
Let's hear from everyone else, what do you think, Anthony?
I think drafting the, the POSDEC language would be helpful for the board to at least see it, that may help guide the decision, doesn't mean we have to act on it, and while it's being drafted, the applicant would still be afforded next month's meeting to provide some additional information, and perhaps give the board additional information that may change our mind. So, I, I don't see necessarily the harm, but I do share your concern, Chairman, about the potential for a very significant impact for traffic circulation, and so I, I see that the possibility of going in that direction, so I would support the, the POSDEC language, be prepared as a draft for us to at least look at. And let's see what the applicant can come up with, and we can decide at the next meeting whether we want to act on it.
I think it might be helpful, actually, for the board to see what a, what POSDEC paperwork looks like, because as Felix mentioned, it's been a long time since we've done one.
Yeah, I don't think it.
Whether, whether that's right or wrong, I, you know, I don't want to characterize it, but.
Yeah, maybe we do nothing with it, but to have it and have the board look at it, and, and to think about the words that are in there, and whether or not it really rings true, and whether or not that's the true direction that we need to go, but I think to have that first is something we would need.
What do you think, Fred?
Do you, do you think that the applicant can have things ready for us for the next meeting?
Well, that's, I was asking Mr. Glad.
Well, I was just sort of asking the applicant.
Yeah, I.
Because if he can't do it, you know.
I, I got to check with Colliers, but, I mean, I think they have everything they need to do like a traffic study.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm tossed both ways. I agree with Felix, I agree with her, you know, but it can't hurt us to have the information.
Like I said before, if we have the SECA POSDEC paperwork ready to look at next month, that doesn't mean we have to act on it.
No, we don't.
It definitely can help the board sort of see, see what's involved in that process. And meanwhile, it wouldn't hurt for all of us to refresh our memories or to look for the first time at some of the SECA process information that's available through DEC. There's this, the new, the updated SECA cookbook that's really quite helpful in giving you a good indication of the different steps that are required through the whole process.
Yeah, I also don't like to drag things out forever.
Absolutely.
And, and I can see that happening if, you know, so we put a little bit of constraints on it with, can the applicant getting it done? Some of our applicants haven't gotten it done, you know, in the normal process, when we ask for it, and they, and at least they are delaying it, and we're not delaying it.
Robbie, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm kind of agree with Fred, I mean, I'm split between both Anthony and Felix. I've never seen a positive D, D, I think, so, but maybe, maybe just drafting it will just give us an idea, I mean, and at the same time, we should get more information from the applicant, assuming they can submit it by 23rd, and so.
How about you, Bob?
I kind of was agreeing a little bit with Felix also, but I think Dominic gave us a lot of good information to understand what we're trying to get, but I think that this is like a kind of a, a lot of unanswered questions, like I feel like the dominoes can go either way. So, you know, that's.
Well, again, having that paperwork before us doesn't mean we have to act on it necessarily at all, but certainly not at the next meeting if we don't feel we're ready, but if we don't have it, I just, I'm afraid that you, the board members who haven't seen a POSDEC before wouldn't necessarily know what it looks and smells like.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
BJ, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that having that information, whether we use it or not, would be handy, right? So, let's get that, is my feeling.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have enough there to, to go with a motion, so would someone like to make a motion to the effect of authorizing our consultants to prepare draft EAF Parts 2 and 3, and a draft positive declaration for the board's review, let's say, and possible consideration at the December 8th meeting? So move. Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Robbie seconds it. Further discussion? Further discussion?
From the left, look to your left.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oppose.
One opposed, and any abstentions? No abstentions, so that passes six in favor, one opposed, and no abstentions. Okay, so, John, I don't know if this is something that you could do in conjunction with the requests for the preparation of this documents, but perhaps checking with Liz Axelson and her perhaps checking with Liz Axelson and her experience on handling these kind of seeker matters might be helpful.
Yeah. And, and I'm sure we can probably work with Dominic as well to get something together for you guys to take a look at.
Okay. That would be great. All right. Thanks all. So, yeah, sorry, this was kind of a long, drawn-out discussion, but I think it was very helpful and hopefully it'll help move things along.
Yep. Yeah. We'll try to see how far we can get with the site plans and also traffic study.
And again, I think that could and should be a consideration of what we do with the POSDEC at the next meeting. If you give us an indication that things are, you know, progressing well, but it's not quite ready, we, we can wait.
Sure. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. All right. Well, I'm, yeah, we're gonna, some people are gonna get up. I don't know that we need to necessarily take an actual formal break unless people want to.
Well, we just lost two board members at the consult.
All right. Let's, let's take a five-minute break. Five-minute break. So we convene at nine forty. Thanks. Okay. The next item on the agenda is four fifteen, the four fifty-three U.S. Route Nine Site Development Plan and CHI Acquisitions LP, two-lot subdivision, order to review submission made by the applicant's representative on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
So we are looking forward to hearing a short, well, not so short, overview of the changes that were made in the plans and the progress that's been made on the things we talked about at the last meeting.
Absolutely. So for the record, Jennifer Gray from the Law Firm of Keenan Bean, here on behalf of CHI Acquisitions, the applicant. I'm also joined here tonight by Brad Vanderble and Connor Jaeger on behalf of the applicant, also Franz Locky from Sessi Consulting Engineers, and Amanda LaRosa, our traffic engineer from Stonefield. I apologize for my gravelly voice. I'm just getting over some laryngitis. So if you can't hear me or can't understand, just wave and I'll, I'll try to, I don't know, what I'll try to do, but try to speak more clearly. So we are here tonight for the continued review of the application submitted back in May for the construction of a warehouse building of about three hundred and fifty thousand square feet on the southern portion of the Duchess Mall property on Route Nine. We were last before the board at your October thirteenth meeting. You declared yourselves lead agency. Since then, we have submitted responses to the comments that we received for that meeting, and we believe we've made significant progress with the application. We're in receipt of CPL's November seventh memo. We're prepared to discuss that memo tonight. We can also provide a written response in advance of your next meeting. And we're hoping that our procedural path is a little bit more streamlined and clear-cut than your last application. And we would ask that the board schedule a public hearing for your next meeting on December eighth. But with that, what I will do is I'll turn it over to Franz Locky to go through the changes that have been made since we were last before the board. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Franz Locky from Sessi Consulting Engineers, here on behalf of the applicant to discuss the changes that have been made to this project. So at the, I'll pull up the site plan rendering here. At the last public hearing, or since the last public hearing, we have received word from the Fire District that they have no further comments on the application. They're satisfied with it as is for now. And the county, Duchess County has also responded to our response to them, saying they have no further comments either. So they're satisfied with the application at this time. At the, the board had indicated the last meeting as well that to have more of a diversified landscaping when you're coming down the Route Nine corridor, so, and requested that we introduce some evergreens and diversify some of the tree species, which we have, we have actually tightened up some of the spacing a little bit on the trees. So we've tightened up some, just space, the spacing here and provided some evergreens. Every three to four trees, there's a couple evergreens, and we go to deciduous trees to really bolster up the landscaping here. When you pull up the rendering, looking from, so here is a rendering looking from Route Nine. It's a little zoomed out. However, you can see a sample of the different tree species that we've really brought in in a response to the board's thoughts here. We have also included, since the meeting, you've been in receipt of the architectural boards for all the materials. So you, it's, it's here today if you haven't seen it already. And I don't believe at the last meeting, we didn't have these renderings available. So now you can really see what the views on each corner of the building are going to be. Here's the office area, which is actually on both ends of the side facing Route Nine. We have submitted plans and responses to CPL's memo. Since then, since the last meeting, we've received a updated memo dated November seventh with some comments to it. The majority of the comments that could be addressed at the time have been addressed, and they're no longer on here. I can go through this memo line by line to address as, as we needed. So I'll start out with, in, in the general.
Well, why don't, why don't we hold off on, yeah, why don't we hold off on, on the CPL memo? Because I'd rather give John Bodendorf an opportunity to just go through it, and then, you know, you could respond to those. But, you know, why don't we stick with some of the other things? Like, let's get a little more into the building architecture, where I think there were some changes in the, the actual design of the building, which I think would be appropriate to go through. And then there was, there are certainly some things in the, in the traffic, the revised traffic study that I think are going to be quite relevant to the discussion tonight. So if you don't mind, so do you have the building elevation drawings?
Pull up here. Yes.
So you notice we have two monitors now. And I'm just looking to see if one is any better or clearer than the other one. Debbie's pointing to that one. My eyesight isn't good enough.
But I am closer.
So if you see me going back and forth like that, you'll know why I'm doing it. But I'll try it this way for a while. So I noticed some changes in it. Do you want to tell us what the changes were? Or is, is there someone from the architecture team who would like to do that?
Our architect is based out of St. Louis. They weren't here, able to come tonight. Bill talked to you about some of the changes that were requested. And I know one of the main items you had mentioned was on the long elevations of the building to add some sort of either texture or depth to the, to the elevation. I think our architect was able to accomplish. Unfortunately, with an industrial building, you know, there's only so much depth you can provide. And we do that through either staggering our panels or providing some sort of stepping of our panels. I believe we've added color, some additional windows, you know, at the egress doors. As you get along the elevation, these panels are structural, so we can't add large swaths of windows because they are supporting the roof structure. So what we've done here is, you know, add some color at the egress stairs. We've added additional windows. And we've also, if you zoom in, but we have stepped our panels down so you don't get that flat elevation across the entire width of the, of the building. We also added some additional windows on the, each elevation at the entrances to just provide some additional variations in the panels.
Is it possible to zoom in on the middle one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Oh. The thing I like about that, the way it was revised, is that you do have sort of a visual separation, the way that it's broken up, both with the slight indentation in the roofline, but also in going vertically down. It sort of almost gives the perception of separate sections of the building. And I think that helps to accomplish what, what we had in mind.
And I'd like to challenge our architects a little bit, and we think they've come up with, you know, nice entry features. You know, we do anticipate this to be a single-tenant building, but we did provide entrances on both ends of the building in case it does become a multi-tenanted building. Mainly put them facing Route Nine. So as you're coming into Route Nine, into Fishkill from eighty-four or from Route Nine, going, traveling north, I know it was, one comment was the, kind of the entrance to Fishkill. So we wanted to make sure that we paid a lot of attention to these corner details.
And the corners are, that's kind of like most of these, that's like office areas from either flank.
Correct.
Okay.
We don't anticipate it being a multi-story office inside the building. Generally, you know, there isn't a major office component to these warehouses. We have some, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot office components, but mainly you'll see for this size building, four to eight thousand square foot of office.
So getting back, you were mentioning the number of tenants that might be in the building. So the, the current plans seem to indicate the possibility of two tenants with two separate office spaces. But you, you just mentioned, I think, the possibility that it could be a single tenant as well. And we just won't know that at this point.
Won't know that until, you know, as we get further down the road and then our marketing to determine what our tenant mix would be. But we envision this, given the size of the building, to be a single tenant.
Does that mean you're going to have two different signs if you have two different tenants?
Two different signs posted onto the building?
Yeah.
Given that it's close enough to the roadway, I don't envision this having a building-mounted signage. But obviously, if there, we have a tenant that would like a building-mounted sign, we'd follow any zoning code as required.
It's usually probably right on that.
Yeah, probably on the corners to direct, you know, mainly is for deliveries.
No, I saw this, the floor plans, it's just a blank slate for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
But is the assumption that would not be more than two tenants?
No, we don't envision it being more than two tenants. No.
Okay. All right. Oh, good. That helps a lot, I think.
I think that's my cue.
Okay.
For the record, Amanda LaRosa with Stonefield Engineering, we're the traffic consultant on the application. We recently resubmitted a traffic impact study and a signal warrant in response to comments that the board had made and the most, or the previous CPL letter. As was mentioned, we are in receipt of an additional round of comments, which we do intend to address. I want to highlight about five changes to the report and some coordination with outside agencies that we've made since the last time we were in front of you. Mr. Kanter, in response to primarily your comments at the last meeting, the study was revised to include traffic impacts associated with the Continental Commons. We also have had a meeting with DOT to discuss the improvements that you've requested. We've indicated that we intend to provide sidewalk along the site's Route Nine frontage, which the DOT does not object to. We've also discussed that we intend to install a right-turn bay at the southern driveway at the board's request. They also do not object to that. So that will be on the plans that we eventually prepare and submit for engineering review to DOT. And probably the most important thing to this board is the signal warrant. The DOT, sounds like they're leaning towards approving a signal. They are reviewing our most recent submission, and I have advised them that we intend to be on the December calendar, should the board agree to calendar us. And they have promised to give us a decision by that time. So hopefully, the next time in front of you, it will be with some good news. And then the final thing that we did discuss, since the last time we were here, we had a meeting with the Duchess County DPW Transit. The Transit Division does have a bus stop initiative going on, so they could very conveniently have a bus stop specked out. They provided the details for both the bus pad and the shelter that they'd like us to install. So we're working through the finer details of exactly where that would be on the site.
Good.
Do you have any idea at this point of where a desirable location for it to?
So it's currently located right by the McDonald's. There's a pretty small sign there indicating it now. So that was my initial inkling. And Michael Grittini of the DPW said that he's comfortable with it there. The only other thing that he threw out was that he might deem it more favorable over by the college, but we have some vetting to do there. He has some internal discussions to do. They're also contemplating some changes to the bus routing that he wasn't ready to share with me exactly what they were. So I hope by the next time I talk to him, I have a more definitive location. But for now, I can tell you there will be a, a bus shelter somewhere on the site.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Excited to hear that the DOT provided so much input so quickly. That's
Quickly.
Yeah. For the DOT, yeah.
That's great. That's good music. One thing that I think we also talked about was the installation of bicycle racks. And I didn't actually see those in the plans, but is that something that could still be considered for, mainly for employees? And I think we did talk about that at the last meeting.
No objection. We can certainly vet that further.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something you might not necessarily expect at a warehouse facility, but there are going to be employees, and maybe some of them might use bicycles to get to work. And that would, that would certainly be a good idea, I think.
Sure.
Chair, did we talk about charging stations too on this building? I don't remember.
We did. Yeah, to remind us of what, of what happened with
Make-ready.
Why don't you come on up?
We have, we have several on both ends of the warehouse. We have several spaces to, for make-ready. So the condo will be run, and whenever they charge, get installed, they'll get installed.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we let John Bodendorf go through the engineering memo, and we could pick up any of that that we need to?
Okay. Before I get to the actual comments in the memo, I know at the last meeting I wasn't here, but there was some discussion about whether CPL had staff that are experts in preparing or reviewing Phase One A, One B archaeological studies. We don't, we typically sub those services out. But I did speak with Liz Axelson in our office, who, who works with a lot of these consultants in other townships. And essentially, what she told me was that, given that Essentially what she told me was that, given that this particular application has a report with findings that essentially said there are no impacts and that the OPRHP agreed with them, that it would be extremely unusual for another consultant to, to find anything otherwise. So, I mean, if the board would like to pursue having an independent consultant review that, we can certainly provide names, but it, it may not be worth the effort. So.
Okay, thanks for following up on that.
Sure. So in our, in our comment memo, the, the first couple of comments talk about the need for DEC permits, and we believe that they should have an agreement for stormwater between property owners. It sounds like they may have gotten responses from, a response from the Dutchess County Planning Department. We haven't seen that yet. Is that something that came in recently, or, I forget who mentioned that?
It was, it was dated, I believe it's October 11th. We'll get it over to you guys.
Okay, okay, yeah. Because I, I don't believe that was part of the, the last submission. Board should review and discuss landscaping, lighting, signage with respect to adequacy, the need for PE stamped design plans for the retaining walls. And then their cup fill analysis indicates a, a very large amount of fill that's going to be brought in. We noted it's about 8,000 truckloads, and, and we asked if, that, if that was considered in the traffic study, and it, their response was that they were going to incorporate that into a revised study, so. It also sounds like they did get a response from the Fire Prevention Bureau. We haven't seen that yet, so.
Yes, that was yesterday, I think.
Okay. So we'll look forward to seeing, it sounds like they're, they're in good shape there. Comment number nine under utility plan. We haven't actually received anything in, any formal comments in writing from the Health Department at this point, but I did get a voice message, and I was hoping to have something in writing to share with you tonight, but that didn't happen. But got a voicemail from Jim Upright of the Health Department. He covers the town of Fishkill. And apparently, on a recent inspection of the, the village's facilities, he and the, the water operator had a discussion about this particular project. I wasn't there, so I didn't, wasn't privy to, to what exactly was said, but I guess they have some concerns over what's being shown in terms of rerouting the 20-inch line that the, that's the village's main supply line from their, their well field and reservoirs south of the site. So what I, what I've said at this point is I just recommend that the applicants reach out to the Health Department and, and the Village Water Department sooner than later just to make sure that this isn't going to be something that would necessitate a, a change to their, to their layout. Because it wasn't clear to me exactly what the, the overall concern was based on the voice message, so.
So I can actually speak quite a bit to that. We had a conversation with Jim Upright about this already. He had called and, and we spoke to him, and I believe there's some emails going back and forth on it. But he had indicated that he was going to reach out to you and the, and the town to let it, to let you guys know what his concerns are, but we're already working with Jim to make sure he is satisfied with the construction procedures mainly for installing this water main. Our proposal, as long as the village and the Dutchess County are, are okay with it, we will essentially construct the 20, a new 20-inch water main. Because right now it goes through where the proposed building is. We will construct it within the drive aisle, and then it will, we'll construct it, tap into the existing water main, make sure everything's online, functioning properly, before we cut off the existing main and remove it for construction. So, and we have added notes and everything to the plan to necessitate that coordination. We have reached out to Jim a couple of days ago to just confirm whether he's okay with the way the plans are presented at this point, and also ask him for some meeting dates for next week. We haven't heard back yet, but we are working towards having meetings and making sure everyone is good with our plans.
Okay, so I would imagine that would also include a revision to whatever existing easement there is for the, the water line that would have to.
From our understanding, there is no easement.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, my assumption is there will be an easement coming forward with whatever goes on, but that's something that we will handle. We will coordinate with the Dutchess County as well as the village.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear you've had those conversations, because like I said, I only heard, at this point have received a, you know, just a, a voicemail, so. It sounds like that's something that can be worked out. Didn't have much, many swift comments left, just some procedural stuff. And then with the, the traffic, the revised traffic study, the one, I mentioned that the truck traffic already. The other comment that our reviewer came up with was with respect to the traffic signal warrant analysis, the build condition driveway volume should include the existing traffic volumes that currently use the, the driveway. That, and that would satisfy, if, if they include that, that would probably satisfy all of our comments and concerns.
Just to speak to the traffic signal warrant analysis a little bit, I, I did resubmit a signal warrant following a meeting we had with DOT, and ultimately that, whether or not a signal is installed is entirely up to the DOT.
Right.
It's their roadway. So I'm happy to share that with David, but I think by this point, that's probably a moot comment. We're just waiting on a decision based on the analysis that we've.
And that, that may be the case, and, you know, with DOT promising to weigh in by December, that, that may put all this to bed. So.
Is there anything that the planning board can do to facilitate, you know, that discussion with DOT in terms of making a decision on the traffic signal?
I've relayed everything that you said at the last meeting, and I'm not sure if it moved the needle. They might have been leaning this way anyway, but from the feeling that I got, I'm thinking they're going to approve this signal. They also indicated that they're looking for the applicant to fund some improvements to other signals on Route 9, so I, I, I do think it's coming.
Have to, have to be there in the morning.
Yeah.
When they leave that Home Depot, like, it's a race, three lanes to get down to one lane.
Yeah, the equipment they're looking to install on Route 9, they have like nine intersections targeted for advanced coordination, cameras and detectors.
Buffer that.
Then it goes from two lanes to four lanes, and everybody speeds off to catch up on the other lane. It's going too slow. Have fun.
So, Mr. Bodendorf did mention the, and you, and I guess you had indicated at the last meeting perhaps, that the construction traffic would be included in the amended traffic study? Was, was that?
Yes, it wasn't. That was my oversight. Frankly, the comment wasn't in the traffic section, and when I was addressing the comments, I was focusing there, but we're happy to include that for our next submission, and I can speak to that at the next meeting.
Okay. Good. All right, well, board members, any comments or questions for any of the applicant team that we heard from?
Nothing.
No, a lot of strides in the right direction. I, I thought the elevations and the renderings were a big step in the right direction as to what we were looking for, which was very welcomed, and the materials, the material board we saw, I, I think that was helpful as well, so I, and I think the comments I had last month are, are, you know, either being addressed or have been at the last and middle, so, yeah, I think it's a big step in the right direction.
Yeah. Did you?
Yeah, I just had one comment on the easement agreement for the stormwater. There's currently an agreement on the property between the two separate property owners, which we would add the new owners to. And it was reviewed with this board several years ago during the past renovations with Home Depot and with the Citizens Bank, so it has been looked at, and we have cross easements to allow for the, the stormwater water and utilities.
Okay, well, perhaps i- if you could just provide a copy of what's existing and, and a description of how the, the new owner will be incorporated to it, that, that will probably take care of it.
Sure, thanks.
Robbie, any comments, questions about it?
Yeah, we're talking about what you're gonna have to bring into the site. Do we factor in, as you can see, there's a lot back there behind the building, the existing buildings and the demo. Are we factoring in what is going to be, you know, how many trucks are going to be coming out of there?
They're gonna be crushing most of it.
You're gonna be crushing and trying to use it?
Crushing, reusing, throw base.
Okay, yeah, that's good. All right. Cool.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll, I'll just reiterate that I was quite pleased with the revised building design, you know, addressing to the extent possible the, the concerns we had about the gateway entrance to the town. I thought the architects did a pretty good job on that.
They did, good.
Adding and interspersing evergreen trees in the landscaping plan, I think will help. I was really glad to see, it sounds like a lot of progress on the, the transportation and circulation issues that we brought up. And the sidewalk, I think, would be an excellent addition, so I'm looking forward to seeing the plan revisions that will address that. Again, bike racks, I already mentioned, we can have those added to the plan. Public transit, bus shelter, bus stop improvements would be great, and the traffic signal is a biggie, but we're looking forward to hearing from the state on that. So I guess the main question on all these things, really moving in a positive direction. So, you know, the question is how do these move forward, and when would we be thinking about getting planned details developed to incorporate those things, assuming they do, they are able to move forward? And how does that relate to the, the requested scheduling of a public hearing that we have before us? So can you give us any input on that?
We can have plan revisions to definitely incorporate the bicycle racks and the sidewalks prepared for submission for the next hearing. And some of the, the items will coordinate with traffic. Anything else indicate signals? It kind of depends on what DOT's responses are, but we'll incorporate as, as much as we can.
What about the turning lanes? It sounded like that was something that DOT was pretty much receptive to. Is that something that we could maybe get a conceptual plan on that?
Yeah, we can have conceptual plans to share with you and the public by the next meeting, by the deadline ahead of the meeting, actually. We don't usually move into fully engineered plans for the DOT submission until after they've given us some initial feedback, but conceptual level we can certainly have.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, yeah.
You have it.
So Dominic, what do you think about moving ahead with scheduling a public hearing for the December meeting?
I think it's appropriate at this time.
As we've done in the past with other applications, if the need arises, we can always leave the hearing open and continuing, continue it at the next meeting, but.
I mean, the board has taken good advantage of public input in the past to identify issues that should be looked at, and, you know, this is a prominent site and could benefit, the board could benefit from public input, and having public input earlier in the process, I think, would be helpful.
What do board members think about scheduling the public hearing for next month?
I'm for it.
Yeah, me too.
On board.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion then to schedule?
I'll do that, sir.
You didn't even let me finish with the motion. Why don't you tell us what the motion is gonna be then?
A public hearing and having one sign put out front.
Wait, 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 no, we're not gonna do it at the sign right now.
Why the time, Fred?
How about, Fred, is this what you meant to say? Scheduling a public hearing on the 415 to 453 US Route 9 Site Development Plan, CHI Acquisitions LP Two-Lot Subdivision, and I think we need to include the freshwater, wetlands, water course and water body permit? Because that does require a public hearing as well.
Absolutely, I said.
That's what you said?
I said real fast.
For the December 8th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Is that what you meant to say too?
Absolutely.
All right, so Fred moves that.
I absolutely second it.
Felix seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
So we have, we have two public hearings next month?
We have, yeah, this will be the second one, yeah. So public hearing signs, yes, but I think we probably need more than one.
Yeah, I don't know, at least two, I think.
I'd say three.
Actually, I was thinking.
One at each of the driveway entrances, I think, to the, the overall shopping center development.
No, one at, one each at the two ends of the, and one at the, in the parking lot of Home Depot?
Oh, inside, well.
Inside, so the people who park.
Well, first of all, so see, we do have three site entrances to the overall shopping center. The north entrance, the central entrance, and the southern entrance. So I think we need one at each of those. If you need, if you're thinking we need an internal one.
You don't think you need that?
Perhaps if we do, somewhere on that, there's that internal access road that comes in from the central access drive that maybe could help demarcate where the, like, the corner of the proposed warehouse would go.
Don't we have two entrances onto that property?
Well, there are three, technically there are three. There's the northern access drive, the central access drive, and the southern access drive.
I didn't think you had access to this property, does it, Joe? Go to the, where the McDonald's is.
Sure it does. The central access drive provides access to it.
All right, I can look, I thought we had the one going in. I thought you only have three going into the whole property.
Yeah, three access drives, three signs, three access drives. The question is, do we want a fourth one somewhere internally? But I don't think we need it.
I don't think it's necessary.
I think just at the, you know, at the entrances of each of the three, at the Route 9 intersection with the access drives, that's probably where we need them.
But the, the two end signs should be one facing north and one facing south, is that?
Oh, that's a question.
Here's on the side of signs.
There you go.
So we normally don't see the back part of the sign, but if they're positioned properly, they could.
It's supposed to be on the side, so.
I never knew they were backside.
No, the traffic coming from the south, they need to be able to see it's on the left off.
Yeah, it'll be harder, but I mean, there's not much you can do about that.
Traffic going south, yeah, they can see it easily, but coming from the south, going north, yeah, for them it's tough.
We can't put it, we can't put it on the east side of the.
Yeah, I mean, depending upon the location, we can make sure that it's placed in the most visible location possible.
But are we, are we in agreement that three, three public hearing signs at each of the entrances on Route 9?
Yes.
And then they can be positioned accordingly?
Yeah, yes.
And if necessary, we can take advantage of the front and back sides of the signs to show from both directions?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't even know that. Yeah, I didn't even know that. Learn something new every day.
Yeah, I think it's only one side.
Okay, so I think we're okay for tonight. Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't believe we do. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and thank you for scheduling the public hearing. We look forward to seeing you in December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, let's see here, just a couple of quick items of other business. And we, yeah, we're doing okay, relatively speaking. Let me wrap this thing up so it doesn't... Okay, so Fred, maybe you can help me with the conference of plan committee update, but...
Go away, you could go ahead and I'll fill in if I give us anything, which I doubt you will.
Well, I mean, basically, the committee's been meeting regularly since the October 8th open house, which went very well, as we mentioned last time, and that includes, actually, we had a joint meeting, in quotes, with the town board as part of the regular meeting on October 19th, so some of the committee members, Fred was there, I was there, Liz Axelson was there, oh, Ann, what is Ann's last name?
Lagoi.
Lagoi, Ann Lagoi was there, and a couple of others, but we basically presented the draft plan update to the town board and also showed them a lot of the maps that we put together. And now, so, the committee met last night, and actually, for the first time, we're able to put all the maps on the two monitors, and thanks to Debbie, Debbie helped us out with that. So that's really going to help a lot in the future. So, now, this is kind of going into a slightly different phase where the seeker process is starting up, and so Liz has had extensive discussions with the attorneys over at Drake Vogue, including Dominic and Mr. Gabba, about how to proceed with the seeker review, and so that's beginning to be underway, and the committee is actually going to start slowing down a little bit with our work as the town board work on the plan starts speeding up a little bit. So it's not that the committee is going to disband or go out of service, but we're probably not going to meet again separately from the town board until maybe...
January.
January after, right, like, after the, so the way the seeker process seems to be working is that it's, there's going to be, the town board considering a draft positive declaration, so other entities actually do those things at their December meeting, one of the summer meetings. There's, they're probably going to schedule, oh, actually, no, that's going to be considered at next week's town board meeting. Yeah, November 16th.
Yeah, they're going to present it next week, but we're presenting it to them next week.
Yeah.
And then we turn it over to them to do the seeker process.
Yep.
And their seeker process isn't as potentially as extensive as ours' is, we've been told.
And then if they do issue the positive declaration, then there would be a public scoping session set for sometime in December, and then the town board also has to hold at least one, but probably two, public hearings on the plan itself, so I guess they're trying to figure out whether there may be a way to combine, you know, a public scoping session and maybe the first of the public hearings with the plan itself. So, yeah, going into January and early February, the committee will probably get back involved in terms of trying to weed out comments that may have been received on the, those documents, and the, there will be presumably a generic environmental impact statement on the draft conference of plan update, which is a common way of dealing with conference of plan updates. So, that's kind of where we stand. Anything else?
Jonathan, I don't know if you want to give, if any of you want a copy of the plan that had been submitted to the town, Jonathan or I can forward it to you.
We can, and it also is now going to be available on the town's website.
It's supposed to be, that's what Liz told me last night.
Yeah, there is an earlier version of it already on, but the current draft plan, which is going to be the subject of the seeker review.
She told me the presentation she gave last night, she was going to give to the gentleman to go to the website.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Anything else you can think of, Fred?
No. No.
There'll be a lot of, as this is all going on, there'll be a lot of sort of behind-the-scenes of formatting of the plan, but I don't think Liz wants to do too much formatting until it's, you know, kind of clearer whether the plan itself is going to be revised further based on comments that we received. So it's moving ahead very well, very nicely.
Jonathan did a great job. He really led us through it.
The whole committee did a lot of, a lot of work on it, very impressive. So the only other business item that I have is Continental Commons. There's a letter submitted by the attorney for the applicant. The letter was dated October 21st from Lino Sciareta, I think is the way you might pronounce his name, attorney with the firm of Bleakley and Platt, representing the applicant for Continental Commons, requesting that Continental Commons be scheduled to come before the Planning Board at the November 10th meeting. Lo and behold, tonight's meeting, well, we didn't see them here, did we? And they wanted to discuss the following, provide the board with an update on the status of the project, request a meeting with the board's consultants to discuss technical details and items, and to discuss alternative phasing plans. For those of you not on the board during the time of the project review on Continental Commons, we spent about probably four or five years reviewing it back in the day, but the project is basically located on a 10 and 1/2 acre parcel on the east side of Route 9, just south of I-84, kind of just across from where the warehouse proposal is. And that would include a two and a half story hotel building with approximately 90 guest rooms, two retail buildings with a total of 15,000 plus or minus square feet of retail space, a visitor center, and 5,000 square feet of restaurant space. So the planning board adopted a resolution of preliminary approval for the site development plan and the special use permit approvals. That was actually in the end of 2019 that that happened.
Absolutely.
And the project was delayed from moving ahead to final approval in part because of litigation pending on that proposal, and apparently some of that litigation is still pending. But there was litigation dealing with the town board's consideration of connections to the water and sewer systems, and that was settled in the lower court. I'm not sure whether there's going to be an appeal or not on that one, but the litigation that was against the planning board and the applicant filed by the friends of Fischke Supply Depot was appealed, and that's pending consideration by the appellate division, which, Dominic, you had some sort of direct input from our previous attorney who was dealing with that particular matter, and I guess was indicating that that could be quite a while before that even is heard by the appellate division?
That's correct. This is the lawsuit that challenged the board's decision in connection with this project. That lawsuit was dismissed at the, what's called the Supreme Court level, the lowest level court in New York State, and then, so the town prevailed on that challenge, and the applicant, or excuse me, the opponents, rather, petitioners, have appealed that decision that dismissed their lawsuit to the appellate division, which means it's up on appeal. The briefs on that case have been fully submitted, and the next step would be for oral argument, and that oral argument has not been scheduled yet. Typically, when you get your date for oral argument, it's about six months to nine months out, so let's say if you were to hear tomorrow that oral argument was going to happen on your matter in the appellate division, like, the date would be six to nine months out, and then after that, a decision can take easily another six to nine months after that. So you're looking at, you know, at least a year to possibly two years for that to be decided. To put it in perspective, the similar provision relating to Legoland in Orange County...
Oh, yeah.
So in 2018, there were challenges to the approvals for Legoland, which were dismissed, and that is up on appeal. There hasn't been oral argument yet on that case either, but of course, the park's been open for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kyle Barnett is the attorney representing the town in connection with this matter, and that report came from him.
And Kyle, for those of you who weren't here, when Kyle was with us, was formerly the planning board's attorney. That goes back, well, yeah, it goes back to about the end of 2019.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Kyle was involved in pretty much the whole process of the reviewing of the Continental Commons project. But anyway, the purpose of this discussion was also that there were several emails received by Debbie from Daniel Fix, who's also with the firm of Bleakley Platt, and that's, so we had asked Dominic to contact Mr. Fix to basically tell him that the town official planning board does not typically place matters on its agenda without a submission of, you know, at least plans for review or some details of what it is they want to talk about, and there really was none of that from either the letter or the emails. So it was not placed on the agenda because there were no detailed plans or anything like that provided by the submission deadline. Interestingly, Mr. Fix had also requested to set up a separate meeting outside of the planning board forum with the planning board chair, the planning board's attorney, and the planning board's engineer, and basically, we let them know that, uh-uh, that's not going to happen, we don't do that. We do it for pre-application meetings, but that's, that's a totally different kind of a situation where those are intended to let the applicant know before submitting an application in the first place what's involved with the process and what the code requirements are going to be that they'll have to meet. This was sort of like, well, let's have a, just a separate informal conversation about where we are with the project and what the status is, and, no, it's not going to happen.
Said something about technical details, but they didn't say what they were.
Yeah, they didn't say what they were, and even if they had, I wouldn't have agreed to submit on that. And Debbie let them know very clearly, and then I think Dominic followed up at our request with Mr. Fix that, you know, those things happen at a public meeting, but in order to get on that agenda for the public meeting, you really need to submit, for instance, you had an idea of changing the phasing plan. Well, what is that? What's that going to look like? How is that going to change? Anyway, Dominic, I don't know if you want to just...
No, I think you touched on all those issues. My commentary would only be that this board is very focused on, you know, making sure that you're reviewing applications, that you have materials to review, and that, you know, there is a point to appearances, you know, so when someone comes before you, you know, they make a submission, the board reviews that submission, you know, and then if there's a next step in the process to take, then you take it. This is more open-ended, you know, please place us on the agenda so that we could come in and talk to you about the project, and, you know, I think, you know, having a more detailed update that could be reviewed in advance of the meeting, and then you could have a more productive conversation, I think, at a meeting rather than this kind of open-ended...
Could that, could that not be done? I mean, they've been coming in for extensions of preliminary approval. Could that, could this, these discussions that they wish to have with us, could they not be, could they not wait until it was time for them to come back for another extension? Because they're going to have to at some point in the near future.
Actually, if I could jump in for a second? Their current extension will expire on December 13th, so they're going to have to submit something to be by November 23rd.
Which would put them on next month's agenda, at which point we can then, they're going to have to ask for an extension. At that time, they could bring these topics up.
There really should be submission, as John said, I have to agree when you talk about phasing plans, there really should be submitting stuff for you to look at in advance of the meetings.
So hopefully it would be, switch that around, what you just said, and it would be an agenda item to discuss what they wanted to discuss, and by the way, we need an extension.
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah, I remember giving them an extension recently, a few months ago.
It wasn't long ago.
We did one in June 9th this year.
Yeah. I remember giving them an extension.
How time flies, right?
So it would behoove them to get on the next agenda?
Share what?
Yeah.
How long of an extension can we give each time? Just six months, or is it...
It's six months at a time without, without a limit.
Correct. So anyway, Dominic told Mr. Fix that I, as chair, would let the board know what was going on with all that, and that's what I've done. And thanks, thanks to Dominic for your help in that matter, but I guess we'll be seeing them soon. If not, then we won't even, we won't even go there.
It's not.
So I think that's all we had under other business. Does anyone else have anything you want to bring up?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, before you do that, I'll just mention the next meeting is Thursday, December 8th, and the deadline for submissions is Wednesday, November 23rd at 2:30 PM. So Fred moves to adjourn, would someone like to second that?
That was my C, yes.
Yeah, Felix, Felix is out of here.
Everybody wants to stay, go ahead.
We're done. Thank you, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving all.